Noon, the time is now 1:16 PM and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education regular meeting of March 14th, 2023 is now reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment. I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limits so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin with public participation with the persons that are physically in the room with us today and then move to those in the queue online. First up, and I'm going to apologize, I'm going to do my best, Marim Alihami. Are they here? Come back, okay. Azar Ahmed. Marim Aladre. Ala Alraday? Alraday? I apologize, I'm murdering it.
He's not bad from lunch.
Okay. All right. Next up, Bree Morgenberg.
Bree Morgenberg, Mount Pleasant Moms for Liberty of Isabella County. This is an excerpt from Great Schools Initiative. Quote, "Rogue sex is any and all sex education provided by a public school that does not adhere to the parameters of our stringent Michigan sex education laws, including but not limited to containing sex education to sex ed courses and/or classes, using only S E A be recommended in school board-approved curriculum and materials when providing sex education, providing sex education only by instructors qualified to teach sex education, giving parents prior notice of any and all sex education provided by the school at every grade level, giving parents an opportunity to review all sex education curriculum and materials prior to its being taught, and most importantly, the district is to accept written parental notices opting their students out of sex education without negative consequences bestowed on the student. Instead, schools have allowed unapproved sex education curriculum and materials to permeate into other subjects and classes taught by instructors that are not qualified to teach sex education and without notice provided to parents or an opportunity for them to review and opt out. Further, some districts are even rejecting parent-written opt-out notices. This is all rogue sex ed and it is illegal." Unquote. The majority of this board passed a sex education resolution that failed to mention human sexuality in law in regards to sex ed. Coincidence? I highly doubt it. You have previously been informed that human sexuality frequently is the topic that becomes rogue via gender and sexual orientation education and materials containing graphics and descriptions of sexually, of sexual activity. These are within the five circles of human sexuality, which is clearly stated in law as a topic of sex ed. Both of those fall right here. It is part of human sexuality. Your resolution encourages schools to break the law. I ask that you accept accountability for your mistake and you correct it today. To assist you, I am again providing you with a copy of our resolution concerning sexuality and gender education and promotion. It adheres to the aforementioned law, which is the revised school code 380.1507. Please join me now in my plea. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the awareness and the efforts across the state, efforts to protect our children. May your guiding hand forge and engage the provocateurs and the leaders, including leaders here, and engorge them with morality and knowledge that shields our children from sexualization and desensitization. Provide a path for partnership to see this through. Thank you, Lord, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Next is Linda Syprit Kilborn? Kilborn?
Pretty close. Most people don't even get that far. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself and the way in which I was taught by my elders. My name is Southern Thunder Woman. I'm Turtle Clan, and I reside in the Albion Marshall area, also known as Linda. I've come here today basically to talk about the Native American mascot, which is still an issue here in Michigan. It's been many years since I was last here, so I see a lot of new faces and some old familiar ones. Basically, there's been about 12 schools that's changed since 2020. We just recently port Huron making a change on Friday. Manistee made a change here just about a month ago that I must commend. They did a really excellent job out there in Manistee making that change. They included the students and the community, and it was a really fairly well, I would say, perceived procedure with the kids and everything. And then the Sandusky Wolves are now in existence up there. So there are things that are happening, and at the same time, though, we still have a school, Cannon Frontier, down in the Hillsdale County there, that still use the R word. And we've been approaching their school board since 2020, off and on during the pandemic, and since May of last year, we've been there every month handing out educational material and talking with them, trying to educate the community and whatnot. But our efforts haven't been going along too well, unfortunately. It's a pretty hostile environment at times. So what I'm here today is to ask the board to look at the resolution that was written in 2003, which strongly recommend change. And you also had sent out a couple of mandarandums, one July 11th of 2006, and the last one was in 2016, to remind the schools that the state school board still supports that resolution or create a new resolution or whatever it will take to bring awareness to these other schools. There's approximately 33 high schools still using either mascots, nicknames, logos, fight songs, whatever in their, their school districts. And I'd also like to remind the board that the United Tribes of Michigan has written two different resolutions against the use of Native American mascots, along with individual tribes, the Not No Cephe Hurons, Pocagin Ban Gun Lake. So there, there's support out there for these changes, so I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
The members that I, the members of the community that I called earlier are back, so we'll go back to them. I'm going to apologize if I say names wrong. Whenever you're comfortable, speak in.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maram Redai, and I'm a junior at Universal Academy, where I'm also student government president of my class. With all of what is being said, the topic of charter schools has been talked about a lot lately on the school board, and it seems only fair that we have charter school students come up here and talk about their experiences. I completed my journey in elementary and middle school years at Universal Academy, and I intend on doing the same for high school. As some of you may know, Universal Academy is one of the four charter schools at Hamed Educational Services that operates. For almost 25 years, Universal Academy has provided students like me, a Yemeni woman raised in the metro Detroit area, a wonderful education and great opportunities to achieve the most in life. Some of these opportunities include assisting low-income students in finding scholarships, affordable dual enrollment, and AP courses, allowing students to partake in after-school activities/clubs, such as debate and chess. And given motivation to be a successful in the future, that many students may not have that same motivation at home for students like me that came from third-world countries, especially from Yemen. In Yemen, many people do not have the same opportunities that we do here in America. A great example will be the thousands of Yemeni immigrants who moved to the United States in order to provide these opportunities to their future generations. Those immigrants are mostly living in the metro Detroit area, including my grandparents and my father. With all this kept in mind, I believe that Universal Academy has done a great job in supporting us through this learning journey in ways, in ways that not many schools are capable of doing. Not only have they managed to teach us the traditions and history of not only America but other Middle Eastern countries too, but they also help us keep in touch with our roots and help us embrace our culture and traditions. I'd like to end it with, thank you very much for listening to our voices, and hopefully this will help you give you, give you an insight into the lives of us charter school students. Thank you.
All right, next is Azar Ahmed.
Anywhere you want.
Yes. At the end seat.
Where? She can decide.
The head of the table.
Yeah. Okay. Anywhere you want. Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sekhina Valley, and I am a junior at Universal Academy. When my parents came to America in the late 1990s, they came with one intention, providing their children with the best opportunity to learn and become the most successful versions of themselves. And what better country to achieve that than the United States of America, the country of opportunity, the country of freedom, the country of the free. But unfortunately, very early on, they learned that oftentimes raising children in America meant risking the child's ties to their culture. However, my family alongside hundreds of other Middle Eastern, Northern African families were blessed with the Hamed Educational Services charter schools located in southeast Michigan. My school, Universal Academy, has given its students the chance to learn and become well-rounded individuals within a country that is not our own while also having strong, healthy ties with our culture. This is a gift that my fellow students do not take for granted. Being able to learn and grow while also feeling comfortable and safe within our learning environment is a gift that helps set us up for the most success possible. And don't take my word for it. Take, for example, my older brother, who graduated in the class of 2014 and has gone on to complete a master's in biomedical sciences and is currently finishing his first year in medical school. Or take, for example, my older sister, who has graduated in the class of 2022 and is currently finishing her freshman year at Wayne State University in a degree in computer sciences. These individuals came from disadvantaged, low-income backgrounds, but still managed to complete the absolute impossible and to achieve their goals and dreams in life. It is fortunate that in the pursuit of success, they weren't alone, because our academy has many resources located within it, such as guidance counselors, SAT test prep, financial advising, and so much more. Now, with all this being said, it is no, it is no debate that schools are a place meant for academics and learning, but our schools is so much more than that. It is about the opportunities that are granted to us. It's about the principles that are instilled in us, the bonds and connections we have with our peers and teachers, and this is not taking into account the many classes we are given in our school. We also have numerous student organizations that give us the opportunity to grow and do good within our community. Take, for example, in 2020, when we organized a fundraiser for Yemen and we organized more than 2 million of, excuse me, 2 tons of clothes. And we wouldn't have been able to do this had it not been for our school, had it not been for our community. And on the topic about community, our school is a community, and it's a safe haven for us. It's not just a structure but a setting where we can experience encouragement and acceptance for who we are. It sets us up for the success we are destined for and helps teach us that despite our various backgrounds, we are all capable of doing good in this world and accompli, and accomplishing the goals we set ourselves for with the right amount of work put in. In conclusion, charter schools play such a big role when it comes to modern education, and our school is no, is no exception. In fact, it's a great example of one. And I want to end this off by thanking you all so much for this opportunity, and I hope that you take this insight, and I hope you take into account when you discuss any decisions that affect Michigan's charter schools and students just like me.
All right, next is Maram Alraday? No? Okay, okay, thank you. All right, next is Joseph Warren. And whenever you're ready, go ahead and provide your three minutes. Whenever you're ready, go ahead and start.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Joe Warren. I'm from Muskegon Heights, and I'm sure everybody have heard of some of the issues that we have been had going on in Muskegon Heights. But I just want to speak to the board. Numerous times, we have tried to reach out to have meetings. I'm, I'm, I'm a 45-year volunteer of Muskegon Heights. I also, as a former PSA, Muskegon Heights Public School Academy system, board member, vice president. I just want to say, we have tried to reach out to numerous of the board members, I'm not saying board member, but president, chief deputy superintendent, president of the board to try to get meetings, just to hear our concerns. We have a lot of concern that I don't think, in my opinion, that this board are willing to hear the real truth. For an example, how we got into the position with New Paradigm for Education, how they came about. As a board member, it was kind of like forced on us because we was put on the board, but we didn't have the, we weren't made aware of the, for the former board that they had in place, we weren't made aware that they had issued them a letter about being out of compliance. Now, once they sent us a letter in September, they wanted to reconstitute the board, authorize the board, wanted to reconstitute the PSA board. With that being said, they removed, instead of reconstituting the whole board, they removed our president, who had only been on the board for eight days. Then they turned around a month later and removed me as a vice president. Now, they changed the language on the contract three times just to get their language changed to, to get where they could remove us. But the problem I have is, it shouldn't be about us. It should be about our children. And if our children is not getting the education that they so rightly deserve, just like every other school district here in the state of Michigan, then I think this is the place, the highest place that I think that we can come to to voice our concerns. And if we can't get our concerns heard here, then, then what are, what are, what's going on? I mean, our children deserve a lot better. We don't want to see Muskegon Heights like a Highland Park or an Inster or Albion. We want to see Muskegon Heights where, when I came through Muskegon Heights, I thought we was a striving school district. Everybody knew about Muskegon Heights. So I just want to say that whatever we can do, I'm willing to, I'm asking you all to, please, be willing to have an ear to hear. I think you all have been listening to the wrong people, people that don't really have Muskegon Heights at heart. Thank you again for your concern.
Thank you. Next up is James Burton.
Good afternoon. Once again, board, I am James Burton, graduate of Muskegon Heights High School, of class of 1978, which has a storied and proud legacy. I'm here as a community advocate on behalf of my former high school. The concerns that was raised by my former classmates that just previously spoke here in regards to Muskegon Heights, I come seeking clarity about the revised school code. I think it needs additional checks and balances placed in that language. In particular, I'm seeking clarity on this application in regards to that Public Act 451 of 1976, and its application of the removal of PSA board members. The language of removal that was used against PSA board members, there was a deliberate omission of the full authority of the authorizing board under that statute. But once again, though, I still go back to the fact that in reading the revised school code, section 380, 502, paragraph 5, the state's authority to act in the absence of the local authorizer. So I just would like to seek and put this on the table for this board for clarity and understanding how that is to be applied in charter school districts that have elected school board authorizers in charge also. Thank you.
All right.
Good afternoon. My name is Antoinette Robinson, and I am a proud graduate and resident of Muskegon Heights. I am excited to be speaking today about the condition of Muskegon Heights. My ask here today is that as we move in transition, once again, with management companies, that the State Board of Education expand their conversations to include more people who deal with the decisions of leadership and understand that their fight to educate the students of our community should happen in a non-hostile environment. I ask that you fight to keep the language clear and hold those accountable that get in the way of that and correct them and hold them accountable. Our students, staff, and our community deserve to function in a space with high expectations and not turmoil and confusion. Thank you.
All right, that's all for people in the room. All right, can you hear me, caller?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name, where you're calling from, and go ahead and begin your three minutes of public comment.
I'm Kathy Luster, a school librarian in Plymouth Canton, and a board member of the Michigan Association of School Librarians, MASIL. I'm also president of the American Association of School Librarians. School librarians work with all educators and students in their schools and have a wide impact on climate, culture, and student achievement. Our work aligns with MDE's strategic plan, including Goal 2, to improve early literacy achievement, Goal 3, to improve the health, safety, and wellness of all learners, and Goals 4, 5, and 6. MASIL also worked with MDE to improve an online experimental school library certification program at Wayne State University to increase the number of certified school librarians. This aligns with Goal 7. School librarians are currently working to defend their students' right to read. In May 2022, MASIL created a joint Freedom to Read statement with the Michigan Council of Teachers of English and the Michigan Reading Association. In this statement, we reaffirm parents' right to guide their own children's reading, yet they do not have the right to limit or prevent other children's reading. School librarians have unique education and experience in selecting materials for their school community. We believe all students should have access to inclusive resources to see themselves, to see others, and to build their critical thinking and empathy skills. Each year, a committee of MASIL members creates a new "myself-in-books" list to help all school librarians and educators curate up-to-date, age-relevant, diverse books for their students. We want to thank Dr. Rice for recognizing and visiting this year's SL21 Model School Library, Troy High School, with school librarian and MASIL member Tony Isaac. The SL21 Model School Library program was initiated to provide quality examples and mentors for K-12 school libraries in Michigan. However, Michigan is ranked 47th in the number of students per school librarian, creating an issue of equity of access and instruction for our students. There are several ways MDE can support providing equity to appropriately staff school libraries, including promoting MDE guidelines, asking schools to staff libraries with teachers' with library media endorsement, supporting the need for a school library consultant in the Division of Educators, Student, and School Support, including school librarians and appropriate initiatives, and working toward endorsing school library learner standards. The governors proclaimed April 2023 as School Library Month. We hope that you will join us in celebrating by working toward equity of access for our students. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you.
An issue of equity of act, several ways MDE. Hello?
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you, sorry.
That's okay. If you'll please state your name and where you're calling from, and you can begin your three minutes of public comment.
Thank you. My name's Lena Kaufman, and I'm a mom from Ann Arbor with three children in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As a Michigan parent, I've watched with concern as schools moved rapidly into virtual learning in place of traditional in-person classroom education with certified Michigan teachers. My fear was that it would lead to a future where kids with money connections or both have traditional, high-quality, in-person learning at private and charter schools, while students in public schools like mine would have an ever-increasing amount of their learning delivered by virtual apps. I'm here to tell you that this is indeed what is happening. It is almost 2:00 now, which means my oldest daughter, a student at Ann Arbor Skyline High School, just completed two hours of her day sitting in the school library because there's not enough teachers for all the students who need to take core classes. She's having to take pre-calculus provided by Alex, a technology division of McGraw-Hill. Her learning is supervised, but she has no in-person teacher helping her with pre-calculus this quarter, as every other non-AP pre-calculus class in her school is full. Last summer, my daughter had to take another core summer school class from Apex, a different technology company, that has students move through a dry digital textbook and turn in work modules at a brutal pace. Its education is delivered by an Amazon warehouse productivity measurement program, heartless, with no way for the system to really stop and slow down to figure out why a student might be struggling, lost, or in need of help. To be clear, these classes my daughter needs to, needs to graduate, and she has to take them virtual. Virtual is the only option for her. In Michigan, we have criteria for who can teach students. We fund quality educators, but even relatively wealthy districts like mine are struggling to find teachers. I suspect more than just Ann Arbor has found the same way to plug the hole in the system by requiring students to instead get their core, core requirements from companies like Alex, Apex, and Ingenuity that have very mixed online reviews. Virtual education is great for a small percentage of students, but it's not a good learning option for most. Public school students should not be forced to take a class that is digital program without a real Michigan-certified teacher. Please look into this for requiring some, or requiring some reporting on what these digital companies are, how much money is going out of state to these companies, and how frequently students are made to take core classes digitally because there's not enough teachers. If we don't study this now...
That's your three minutes.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good day. Hello, caller, caller, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, if you could please state your name and where you're calling from, and then you can begin your three minutes.
Okay, I'm Chris White. I'm calling from Detroit, Michigan, representing Restaurant Opportunities Centers of Michigan, and thanks for allowing me the opportunity to address the honorable body. I'd like to first say hello to all the members, the Executive Board, and members of the State Board of Education. The basis of my presentation today under public comment is to garner support for a case that we are involved in, Restaurant Opportunities Centers of Michigan. And this case is Rock Michigan Mothering Justice versus Nestle, with Nestle in its center around the increase in minimum wage and paid sick time out. The issue is that in 2018, signatures were gathered to place an issue before the voters to raise minimum wage, and instead of placing it before the voters, the then-legislature took it, gutted, and amended it, which led to lawsuits to try to make reverse decisions in the legislature. Why is this important? It's important because if this case, which is now in front of the Supreme Court, is not taken up, the petition process, the right for people to petition their government in the democratic process, is in jeopardy. And as board members, you all understand this from the culture wars and just the democratic rights to be able to teach different cultures and accurate history in a classroom. So whether it's workers' rights, students' rights, education fronts, labor, they all are linked. Democracy is under attack. The reason why I'm before you all is because I believe that once people come through the K-12 system, and most of the jobs that they take while in college are in the restaurant industry, waiters, waitresses, and we believe that they deserve fair and just wage. Some of you, when you were at the university that you attended, may have waited tables or worked in the kitchen at a restaurant. So we represent over 6,000 restaurant workers. We do have a training program that trains people on not just their rights, but cooking, serving, and so forth. So I'm asking members of the State Board to support the case. You can research it. I'm available by the information that I presented to you, and we just ask for your support.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other callers, Mike?
Nope, those are all the calls.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much for those of you who shared public comment today. We're now at the point in our agenda where we hear from President Dr. Pew.
And yes, thank you for the comments. It's always good to hear from the public. And so we will respond to your concerns and thoughts, maybe today, maybe at a later time, but we are listening and we will respond. Just wanted to circle back. As we all know, last month was Black History Month, and I mentioned that we would be holding town halls. Maybe we had held the first town hall, but we did finish up three town halls that were virtual and that were across the state. Thank you to Board Member Tilly and Superintendent Rice for just listening in, and it really was a listening opportunity, and it was co-hosted with Michigan Legislative Black Caucus, Senator Erica Geis's office, and Michigan Black Lives Matter, One Love Global, the Global African Business Association. And at this time, we're compiling the information. We will have available the recordings for, that will be shared. They will be shared with the legislators and as well as the department. And then we hope to soon announce some sort of a joint town hall where we will also make sure that this information is addressed. On February 20th, I hosted, it was an unfortunate hosting, but we did host a press event. And the focus was on calling for policymakers to join the governor and our senators and now our House legislators to pass sensible gun laws. We were joined by survivors of gun violence throughout communities in Michigan as well as survivors of Oxford, educators, parents of survivors as well. We were also, we had March for Our Lives, David Hoag, who experienced the unfortunate gun violence in Parkland, Florida, and Mariah Cooley, who speaks on her brother who died of gun, due to gun violence. Senator Rosemary Baer, Representative Brenda Carter, Mikey 23 Foundation, whose father convened or organized this organization after his son passed away due to gun violence. My past, again, One Love Global, Michigan Black Lives Matter, No Future Without Tomorrow, MEA AFT, and Lansing Chapter of NAACP, joined us in that call to action. On March 9th, Dr. Rice and I testified during the Senate Civil Rights Judiciary and Public Safety Committee. We were there the week before, and we listened to testimony of survivors, and we were there the week after and testified very heavy. I will say the press event was very heavy, as well as sitting and listening to the stories of survivors, the stories of those who didn't, family members of those who did not survive gun violence. And I know that we'll be talking about our resolution soon. And I bring up the point that here in Michigan, we have one of the highest rates of gun violence, gun homicides of black people, and that's, you know, in the U.S. And Michigan black youth were four times more likely to be killed with guns than their white peers. And from the years 2015 to 2019, according to Centers for Progress, the rate of gun homicides against young black people in urban Michigan communities was 33 times higher than gun homicides of young white people living in the same counties. And the data shows that violent crimes by, due to white-on-white crime is very comparable to that of black-on-black crime. So I know a lot of people like to use that as an excuse, but that's not the reason. What the data and studies show is that violence happening in urban regions in just a few neighborhoods that are at an economic disadvantage and are highly segregated and have a long history of racial discrimination. The one thing that we can say about the devastation that we've seen in Oxford and MSU is that we are united across the state in varying communities, whether we're talking about community violence, whether we're talking about the violence that happens in our school buildings. And we know that violence that happens in communities impacts schools, and what happens in schools impacts community. And so my testimony before the Senate Committee was a call for policymakers to join the governor, Senate, House Dems, in acting policy that calls for secure storage of firearms and ammunition, universal background checks for gun purchases, and preventing guns from getting in the hands of the wrong people. Much like, and I did thank them, and we reminded them of the resolution that we passed. We also talked about this must be done while we're also supporting equitable investments in our school system, our neighborhoods, and adequate provisions for mental health and social and emotional supports. And one thing that I continue to impress upon people is to call on our policymakers to make, to place more focus on disarming gunmen and those violent actors against our children than they are of disarming our children and their educators, of knowing their history and having supportive environments regardless of their race, religion, or gender identity. I close by saying, Kathy, March is Reading Month, but it's also Women's History Month. So happy Women's History Month. And next week, I hope to be able to gather some video footage and clips of some of our past presidents who happened to be women. And so I hope to be able to put that together and bring that before us. But I thought that that was a good collection to talk to people like Kathy Strauss, Barbara Mason, and Cassandra Ulbricht. That is my report.
Thank you very much, President Pew. I'm a reporter of the state superintendent, and I'm going to hit some high points on legislation because I think they're to our ability to drive an agenda in support of kids. The Read by Grade Three Retentions Bill has passed both the House and the Senate is heading to the governor for signature. We did testimony today on the A through F bill. Chief Deputy Superintendent Dr. Sue C. Carnell, Office of Educational Assessment and Accountability Assistant Director Mr. Chris Janzer, testified in favor of the bill to eliminate the A through F accountability system as redundant. Teacher and counselor reciprocity bills. As we speak, our legislative liaison, Dr. Cheryl Kennedy, and the Office of Educator Excellence Manager, Kelly Brozansky, are testifying in favor of these bills to reduce the regulatory barriers to veteran teachers from other states being able to come to Michigan more quickly and to be able to teach in Michigan, both teachers and counselors. These are four of the six elements in our addition-by-subtraction legislative priorities. The other two, as you may recall, are the ability of a broad swath of people to substitute teach, number one, and the ability of retired teachers to return to the classroom, number two. We continue to work with legislators on a weekly basis on these initiatives, and we anticipate some success in the coming months on each of these. The retired teacher issue is easier to talk about than it is to resolve, but we're going to make it happen in the coming months. In addition, as President Pew mentioned, she and I testified March 9th on gun safety legislation. I have nothing to add to what she said, save for the fact that it was searing to be in the room for three hours with the survivors of the tragedies in Oxford and Michigan State, literally searing. And to lose a person, to lose a child when that child did not have to, did not have to die, did not have to be lost to gun violence is an outrage exceeded only by our doing nothing about it in the wake of that outrage. And we have a responsibility to act, and I believe this legislature will act in the coming weeks to address some of the gaps in gun safety legislation. We had budget testimony last week by Dr. Kennedy, by our Office of Financial Management Director, Mr. Spencer Simmons, and by me, all of which we believe are helping to move the governor's executive budget recommendation forward, with which we are enormously supportive. We've unpacked portions of this. Actually, we've unpacked quite a bit of it for the board. We unpacked a fair bit of it for the legislature, and we are drumbeating around different aspects of it as we speak. Interim Deputy Superintendent Dr. Diane Golzinski has been asked to testify in support of free meals for all students in the House on Thursday. So to the point that was raised earlier, the department is engaged with a state legislature that is increasingly engaged in the business of trying to improve public education for our children in Michigan. It's a more active state legislature. We appreciate the fact that it is more active, particularly around the issues that we think are of value. Lastly, we've asked for an education budget supplemental associated with four elements of the governor's executive budget recommendation. GSRP expansion, number one, free meals for all students, number two, my kids back on track, number three, and my climate plan slash healthy schools grant program. The state legislature has gotten off to a very quick start and well on its way to a very impactful first 100 days. In many ways, it's cause for optimism. That said, an education budget supplemental needs to be part of the legislature's first 100 days of work and for four reasons, as I mentioned, GSRP expansion. We talked about this last month, but I don't want to lose it. I want to keep beating this drum until we get something addressed on GSRP expansion. Legislature has approved $202 million additionally in fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23 combined. That's a tremendous new investment in the expansion of GSRP preschool. Unfortunately, while it is in part about money, it's not solely about money, and we have a responsibility to do other things to increase flexibility, to expand the numbers in GSRP preschool. If we're going to move to fully universally accessible preschool, we're going to have to remove certain barriers to the expansion of preschool. And the three barriers that we asked the legislature to remove associated with dollars that the legislature has already appropriated, this is not about the expansion of dollars in the governor's fiscal year '24 budget. This is about the flexibility to use currently appropriated dollars, '22 and '23, for three new purposes. One, more transportation for GSRP students so that we can fully transport those in need. Two, the ability to move, to incentivize, five-day-a-week, rather than four-day-a-week instructional weeks, and 36 to 38 instructional weeks in an instructional year as opposed to 30 weeks in an instructional year. Hugely important that our instructional week and our instructional year in GSRP increasingly mimic the K-12 year. Now, board, you've heard me say that we lost time during the pandemic from a too skinny school year. I believe that strongly, that our school year in the state is too skinny, and it was made skinnier still in the pandemic. But know that the GSRP school year is skinnier still. The school week is skinnier still. It's not five days a week, it's four days a week. It's not 36 to 38 weeks a year, it's 30 weeks a year. And we need the legislature with currently available funds, with funds that they've already appropriated, to give us the flexibility to incentivize expanded school week, expanded school year, greater transportation, and the incentivization and the acceleration of development of preschool teachers. Now, there's a whole lot to unpack here, but those three elements of flexibility would help us boost GSRP across the state. The second area that we ask for a budget supplemental for is my kids back on track. It's the governor's tutoring program. We're strongly supportive of tutoring for our young people. Some people hear that as remedial. It's not necessarily remedial, and it's not meant to be remedial. It's meant to be responsive, Ms. Trozen, as you well know, as a teacher of the year. And Ms. Hanson, as you well know, as a teacher of the year, nothing comes free, and that includes tutoring, particularly trained tutors, because we want trained tutors for our young people who are behind and whom we want to catch up. And if we want trained tutors, we're going to have to train them, and if we train them, we're going to have to pay to train them. And we're likely going to have to pay to employ them as well. And so the governor has a $300 million recommended investment. We're strongly supportive of an investment in tutoring. But that investment needs to be made now, Mr. Bullock. Bullock. It needs to be made now. We can't wait until a summer approval and a summer governor's signature and the dollars flowing in the fall. We need those dollars to flow now so that they can begin to affect children now, so that at the barest minimum, our educators can begin to plan for those programs or plan to embellish those programs in many cases, rather than waiting six months for a new fiscal year to begin. And so we're supportive of the governor's call for a budget supplemental, and we're drum beating substantially around this issue. Free meals for all children, not for some, but for all children. We know that in the last full year of the pandemic, more children ate, and more children ate because we had free meals for all. And what we found out in a pandemic, no one would have hoped for a pandemic, but what we found out in a pandemic was that there are some young people who nominally can afford, whose families can afford the meals, but who don't eat. And if you offer them free meals, they do. That it's not simply about what's on their parent's income tax form, but rather what's in the cupboard, what's in the refrigerator, what goes out the door in a paper bag, what's in a meal allowance in an account at school. More children eating means more healthy children, more nutritiously fed children, more children locked into studying in school, kids who are able to focus on growing up and growing up well. And so we're strongly supportive of free meals for all children, and we believe that a budget supplemental will help us address free meals in the best possible way in the fall. Will give us the opportunity to plan menus, order food, hire staff, work with community eligibility program in such a way that come the fall, we are ready to serve all of our children. That's why we want a budget supplemental for free meals for all children. And then finally, the My Climate Plan slash Healthy Schools Grant Program. Dr. Pugh, something near and dear to your heart as a public health advocate, that this $300 million appropriation would provide money, grant money for local school districts to improve air quality and water quality across the state. Now, we've done some of this with our pandemic relief funds, with our CARES Act funds, our CRESTA funds, our ARP funds, and that's good news. And we'll continue to do more of that with those pools of funds. But tic-tacs goes o'clock, and those, those pools of funds have expiration dates, after which they will no longer be available. The same is not true about the need. The need, the needs will endure. And so these funds are important, and relative to the need for these funds earlier, Dr. Chapman, rather than later, that is to say, in a budget supplemental in the spring, rather than waiting for a summer budget passage and a fall beginning of a budget year. To get this appropriation now permits local school districts to work with architectural and engineering firms in the summer to design projects, permits those projects to be bid out in the fall and awarded in the winter for effectuation in the following summer, that is to say, the summer of '24. If you wait until the fall of '23 to award funds, the likelihood of major capital projects taking place in the summer of 2024 diminishes profoundly. And so from our vantage point, those are four really good reasons to accelerate work on four specific education budget elements in an education budget supplemental. I'm not talking about the entire $80 billion state budget, that's not my point. But I am harkening back, Ms. Shrewsbury, to a point in time where we used to pass budgets, as some of you may recall, at the end of September. And that worked fine for an October 1 fiscal year for, for many in local and state, local and city and county and township government, as, as some of you know, Mr. Howe, as you, as you well know. But it didn't work well for local school districts. So what we did, Ms. Lipton, was we chose to, 12 years ago as a state, to move up the passage, particularly the education budget, because there was an understanding that that education budget needed to be approved in June so that local school districts, statutorily passing budgets by June 30th, would know what their revenue was or close to what their revenue was going to, to be. That was really smart back in the day. But we can take smart and make it smarter by accelerating particular, discrete, important budget elements in the winter-spring so that they're actually able to affect us in the next school year rather than waiting paradoxically and perversely for a full year before they can have an impact on children. As the expression goes, Board, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you. We're going to move to, we're going to move to two of our award-winning Teachers of the Year. Doesn't get any better than that. Ms. Nanette Hanson, the current Michigan Teacher of the Year, will present her report. Ms. Hanson is a third-grade teacher at Lemur Elementary School in Eskenaba Area Public Schools. Ms. Hanson is joined by Ms. Stacy Trozen, Region 8 Teacher of the Year. Ms. Trozen is a high school science teacher at Pinckney Community High School and Pinckney Community Schools. Ms. Trozen has taught for 18 years, all of which have been at Pinckney Community High School. Stacy is a member of the high school's building leadership team, acts as the Science Department Lead, and is in fact the Science Department Lead, and is a member of the district leadership team. She's also a member of the National Science Teaching Association, Michigan Science Teacher Association, the National Association of Biology Teachers. We welcome Ms. Hanson and Ms. Trozen to present their report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And Board members, it's always our great pleasure to be here and share what's important about education and our passions and talk about what's best for kids. And today, speaking of that, we are going to be discussing the importance of the sciences and building robust scientific literacy in our K-12 schools. I'm going to turn it over to Stacy so she can introduce herself.
Thank you very much. I'm very humbled to be here today with you. As Dr. Rice said, my name is Stacy Trozen. I'm the Region 8 Teacher of the Year. A little bit about me personally, I have a family of four. There's my daughter, who is a sophomore at Central Michigan University. My son is an environmental health and safety expert in Chicago. And then my husband, who I've been married to for quite a long time, approaching 30, approaching 30 years. We've recently become empty nesters, so I, I have a picture of our, our, our brand-new camper that we're enjoying in our, in our free time. So my focus, our focus today is building scientific literacy by developing stronger science educators and community connections. Scientifically literate students think and act like scientists. They read and write like people in the field, solve authentic problems, research and read scientifically relevant literature, and write and reflect on those words. Scientifically literate students can create a claim and support that claim with evidence and reasoning. They prepare experiments, collect data, and interpret that data to answer driving questions. The Framework for K-12 Science Education, which was published in 2011, is the foundation for the standards that we teach here in Michigan. And it basically summarizes that not only do we need scientifically literate students to engage in the fields of science and engineering, but we need citizen scientists who can make educated decisions about the world around them. Call to Action publication in 20, from 2021, from the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine states, quote, "Scientific thinking and understanding are essential for all people navigating the world, not just for scientists and other science, technology, engineering, and mathematics profession, professionals. Scientific literacy is paramount."
So how can we do this in the K-12 education system? Well, by embedding science across the curriculum, which can build deeper connections with the information and the content. When kids are immersed in hands-on learning, it can be more meaningful and relevant to them. It can directly show kids the answer to this, which you know they're going to say, "When will I ever use this?" Cross-curricular activities allow students choice and ownership over the learning that they have. Students can gain knowledge and see how it relates to real life by using things such as project-based learning and nature-based learning. It gets that interest for them. Additionally, providing students with opportunities to read and write across the disciplines promotes collaboration and allows students to use their background and build on their own interest and skills. Skills such as collaboration, oral communication, and agency are explicitly taught and assessed. Promoting these skills and opportunities at the most primary levels of schools and beyond is important to ignite the love of the sciences and build that scientific literacy.
One way we can do this is by using science notebooks. I do have copies here. I brought some of my student work with me. They're back behind my chair, I didn't bring them up here. But I do have some if you're interested. The student notebooks are a great way for students to show and to really interact as a scientist. They document their thoughts, their feelings, their data, everything that is relevant to them in our course. We can also connect with our community members to explore science in our backyards. Community connections help drive curiosity and engagement. They make real-world connections. Students have the opportunity to see what scientists look like in their element, shows what students, shows students what it really looks like to be a scientist. Pedagogy for, excuse me, for teaching science needs to look different in a science classroom. One way we can get at authentic science literacy and authentic science teaching is by using project-based learning. Students are introduced to a problem, either one they come up with or one that the teacher supplies. And that problem ideally is authentic, one that does not have one correct answer. Authentic problems naturally raise curiosity and critical thinking in students. They have a desire to understand the answer to the question. As Nanette was saying, there's no more of that, why do we need to know this? They need to know it so they can answer the question. Students work in groups to create their final product, deepening on what that question is. That final product could take many forms, could be a poster session, traditional slideshow, or a video, to name a few. By collaborating together, students take ownership of their learning, knowing the importance of the lessons that follow. Teachers provide lessons that help students explore the content in a way that helps students answer those questions. Problem-based learning is similar and is also a strategy to engage students in science. Problem-based learning, like PBL, but it's on a smaller scale. We usually start with a natural phenomenon, one that captures curiosity and causes students to ask questions. Along the way, students might build models to help with their conceptualization of that phenomenon, and that phenomenon often results in data that can be collected by the students and analyzed and shared.
When we are talking about authentic opportunities, we want to make sure that we are promoting scientific literacy, and it's important to tap into students' diverse backgrounds, their strengths, and to spark their interest. I was really happy to hear earlier when we were talking about the literacy initiative, that they were talking about essential for kids and students to have mirrors and windows, to be able to see themselves as future scientists, right? Give them the possibility models of what they could be, and, and to see the people that are out there. Speaking of interesting and opportunities, classroom experiments serve as good starting points for problem-solving and discussion, enhancing teacher-student interactions, student-student interactions, and help inspire students to understand theoretical concepts through discussions about their experiments. Embedding science cross-curricularly exposes students to several different opportunities to learn about a topic. Differentiation, right? We're tapping into all of those types of learners and all of the fun stuff that gets kids engaged and hooked into, you know, we want buy-in for those things. Teaching science concepts to young children can be overwhelming, sort of like herding cats in first grade and kindergarten. But the good news is, it doesn't have to be like that. Thanks to an abundance of wonderfully informative and beautifully illustrated science trade books, primary grade teachers have the opportunity to introduce children to scientific ideas through teacher-led read-alouds. I've listed some here, just a small, tiny list, but many of these books can introduce students to the concepts of science and the scientific process, allows them opportunities to actually grow vegetables and in turn do various experiments with them, as shown on the next slide by our tomato investigations. Now, this, these are of my kids over the years. This is over the course of an entire year that we're trying to build scientific literacy and opportunities to engage students in the science practices. Kids are using their scientific journals and recording their findings. Scientific thinking and understanding are essential for all people navigating the world, not just for scientists and other sciences, everybody. And this makes science fun. Again, we want that buy-in. And starting at the most primary level, it's critical that they're being exposed to it.
I would like to share an example of project-based learning with you from, for my classroom and from my high school. In this particular project, students are exposed to the ecosystem that makes up our school campus. We're very fortunate, we've got a fairly large school campus, and we have a really beautiful creek that runs through it. We learn about what makes a creek healthy and bodies of water healthy, and we see examples of what happens when things go wrong. We propose to students that some areas that are watershed, we're in the Huron River watershed, we propose to students that some bodies of water in our watershed are not healthy. And so students naturally ask, well, is Honey Creek healthy, the creek that runs through our campus? So we go outside, we learn about the creek, we learn about water, we learn about what makes a creek healthy and unhealthy, and students get to go out and collect data. And this is the fun part. They get to go outside in the, usually we start this at the beginning of the school year, so everybody's fresh and new to school. We're building relationships, we're doing fun things, but at the same time, we're doing some pretty hardcore science, collecting data on the creek that runs through our campus. Students work together to generate some of those need-to-knows of what they need to know to be successful in the project. So we teach how to collect data, we teach what data is important, we teach what parameters might be especially easy to collect for our school, for our class. And again, that eliminates that question of why do we need to know this? Lessons are designed and content is taught that will help build the skills necessary for a successful evaluation of Honey Creek. Students will then put together, they'll collaborate and think critically and put together slides that end up becoming a whole class set of data. Each group is responsible for one aspect of the creek, and then as a whole class, we've got all of this data that we can actually take apart and look at. Individually, students are then assessed on their ability to take that data and synthesize a claim and support that claim with evidence and reasoning. They answer that question, is Honey Creek healthy? They take ownership of their learning, and ideally, we have an authentic audience that they're able to, to participate with. That's where community relationships come in. The eight science practices, in my opinion, are the foundation for science education. This is what scientists do in the field. This is what we want our students to do. This is how they think, act, and work in those scientific professions. There's eight practices, and I have some pictures of how we do science at Pinckney High School. We construct explanations and design solutions, and I have a picture of students creating a working heart model to explain how the heart works. We obtain, evaluate, and communicate information. Students in the bottom-left corner of the slide Students in the bottom-left corner of the slide have taken a gene from a jellyfish and transformed bacterial cells to take on that gene so that they glow just like jellyfish. We're analyzing complex data in that particular activity. Analyzing and interpreting data, this is where the notebooks come in handy. I'm always amazed at what students put in their notebook. It's not just word-for-word what I'm suggesting, but they elaborate and expand, and they always surprise me. Developing and using models, this is a huge part of science education for being able to guide students to develop a model about something that they're noticing or data that they're collecting, and then revising that model as their knowledge shifts. Engaging in argument from evidence, which is a lot of what the project-based learning unit I spoke about earlier employs. Some of the others, three other practices that are not up on that slide are asking questions and defining problems, which is also part of the PBL or Project-Based Learning Process. Planning and carrying out investigations, which is my favorite part of science. And then, using mathematical and computational thinking, which goes hand in a hand with data analysis. All of this is tough. It's tough for teachers, it's tough for students, and it's difficult to provide or to employ these different pedagogical techniques if you're not trained and if you don't have strong mentorship in the sciences. So, we're asking that we have and provide appropriate professional development for our science teachers that can help them grow in the pedagogical tools that make science teaching relevant and fun, like project-based learning, problem-based learning, and teaching modeling. Teaching science looks different today. It is more active facilitation and less content-driven. Those eight practices are at the forefront. Teachers need to be very well-versed in appropriate practices that facilitate robust learning. Professional development for science teachers also needs to be up to date on science content. Science is an ever-changing field. Advances in science include lab techniques that we can bring into our classroom, but teachers need training on that. Field trips, not just for students, but for teachers. Field trips are important so that teachers can learn what it looks like to be a scientist in the field. We're trained in our content, but not necessarily in the careers that accompany our content. What does scientifically, scientific literacy look like in professional settings? And being exposed to various professions helps science teachers increase their knowledge based on science literacy. I have a picture of myself and my colleagues. We were fortunate enough to go to the Genesee County wastewater treatment plant, and it was eye-opening. I was able to see science in action, the tools that we use in our classroom and what they're used for by professionals. It was phenomenal. We also need a robust system where teachers have the opportunity to visit classrooms where high-level science education is happening and bounce ideas off of one another. Often, teachers are the only one in their building in their discipline, especially at the high school. For example, I have no other AP Biology teachers in my building. I have no way of connecting with teachers who teach my discipline. I am an island. A partnership mentorship between districts would really help bridge that gap. Monetary support for field trips for both teachers and students, robust lab equipment, the ability to have subs, whether it's money or just personnel, so that we can visit high-quality, passionate teachers in action and take those all-important field trips. We're also in need of high-quality curricular resources at both the primary and high-school levels. Resources for elementary teachers are so important so that they feel comfortable teaching science in their classroom. We lack resources that have caught up with the complexity of our science standards here, science standards here in Michigan. These are some ways that we can increase scientific literacy in our classrooms. We need professional development and support for resources. May I, thank you. May I ask, or may I answer any questions that you might have?
Thank you to our Teachers of the Year. That was terrific. We do not get a lot on science, and we really appreciate it. We do not. And the science journals really brought me back. So, I appreciate that very, very much. Board members, your reflections.
They did a great job.
Mr. Bullock, leading with love. Say it louder so they can hear.
They did a great job. I'm the nerd at the table, so I appreciate it.
You may have company.
I was going to say, I am the nerd at the table. Or a, another nerd, I should say. So, thank you for this and definitely like, I saw a little bit of your son, the environmental health science pieces sprinkled in there, so thank you.
She's a dynamite teacher.
Oh, thanks.
Dynamite.
Thank you.
Thank Dr. Pugh. Mr. Bullock, Ms. Lipton.
Not really a question, but more of just an observation. I recently read an article about how AI is going to change different fields. I'm an attorney, and so there's all of this talk amongst attorneys, how that's going to shape. But one of the things they talked about was, you know, how is it going to shape a teacher's ability to discern something that was produced by AI versus their student? And within the same article, a teacher had a very elegant answer to the question, and she said, "We've been doing project-based learning for years. The ability to allow a teacher to engage directly with their student is the greatest gift to give to a student." And that, of course, means that we support our teachers being able to teach using project-based learning, as you talked about, the resources, and also the smaller class sizes, to be able to work with those students and assess them in a way that reflects the true learning of the student based on project-based learning as opposed to a standardized test, for example, or worksheets or something like that. So, I just thought that was really interesting because there's this sort of buzz about AI, and it took a teacher to sort of answer the question and say, you know, "You give us the resources, and it's not something that we're worried about." So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other, other board members? Other board members looking around?
Yes. I just want to say, can you share the notebooks? When you sat down, that was one of the things I remembered, that you brought the notebooks for the MTOE when I was on the panel. So, I think it would be great for everybody to see the notebooks.
You would like to see the notebooks? Yes, I have them. I should have brought them down to my seat down there, but I did not.
We get gifts.
So, my students were so excited and a little nervous taking the notebooks over to me, especially when they knew who was going to be seeing them.
You were holding out. Yeah, it's a real composition book.
Oh, wow, they're handwriting is so nice. Mine looks like that.
Thank you. This is like a seriously neat person.
Oh, my gosh.
Some of us, we may need translation.
Does anyone mind if we take a picture of you guys perusing the notebooks? Does anyone mind? Just let me know, and I won't flash my camera that way.
What did you learn?
Pet owners over 65 make 30% fewer visits to their doctor. So, I might be able to get a dog again after all.
What did you learn?
Pet owners over 65 make 30% fewer visits to their doctor. identification for a new dog.
So, yeah, mitosis, myosis, yeah. All of those words I hear.
I just wish that we had more emphasis on project-based learning in all classes and less on standardized testing. I know more about this kid after looking at this notebook for two minutes than I would by looking at standardized tests for a year. So, I think this is great evidence for the work that we do in classrooms as teachers. And the closer we are to students and teachers, the more we know about kids. So, bravo to you.
Thank you very much.
This kid has a beautiful mind.
Dr. Rice, did you just want me to give my update for Michigan Teacher of the Year?
Please, Ms. Lipton.
Last month, I wasn't able to be here with you because I had the great opportunity from CCSSO and the National Teacher of the Year to go to Flor, to go to California and have my orientation there. And it was called Rise, Lead, and Teach. It was the National Teacher of the Year Program Orientation. It was a week spent with 55 State and Territory Teachers of the Year. The National Teacher of the Year Program seeks to elevate the teaching profession by recognizing and celebrating educators, providing teachers with one-of-a-kind professional learning opportunities and connecting teachers with a network of partners to ensure equitable education. I'm going to tell you, the highlight of my trip, well, I had a lot of them, but we got to go to Google, and they brought us there for the day. And it was amazing. The culture at Google is just bar none, second to none. And Sal Khan was there. If you know who Sal Khan is, you know, you know. Khan Academy. And he was amazing, and he partnered with his best friend, true best friend. They both stood in each other's wedding and they, you know, anyway. So, that was the very highlight of my, my time there. He was amazing. We took a day trip to San Francisco, and we got to see all of the quick, not a day trip, a night trip. I roped in about 14 other people, just like, "Come with the Michigan, come with the Michigan Teacher of the Year on an adventure." And so, we hopped in an Uber, and we went to see the things. And so, I have forged wonderful, lasting relationships with so many of these amazing educators. They have lifted me in so many ways. I learned about using my voice to advocate for those who cannot and to change systems that are not helping every child. I am so grateful for the opportunities that have been open to me from the Michigan Teacher of the Year, and it has opened my world so much bigger. And thank you, thank you, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you both for representing so well. We appreciate you. We appreciate your presentation. Every Teacher of the Year presentation is interesting and thought-provoking and pushes the board and I think helps us get to better places. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Next item on today's agenda is the annual evaluation of the Superintendent of Public Instruction. Dr. Pugh will lead this discussion.
And this will be a discussion that, where we discuss the results of the closed session that occurred right before the lunch break or during lunch break. And so, per Dr. Rice's contract, the State Board of Education conducts an annual appraisal. And this is done before April 1st of each year. Thus, it is being done now during our March board meeting. And as was announced, we went into a closed session earlier today, and the board provided overall comments. And those comments were, no surprise here, highly supportive of Dr. Rice's leadership of the department and happy to report that the supermajority of the board rated Dr. Rice as excellent or outstanding. And so, the agreement between the board and Dr. Rice stipulates that based on a rating of satisfactory or higher, which of course, excellent or outstanding is higher than that, is higher than satisfactory. And on the annual performance evaluation, so the group, so we do agree that the agreement shall be extended by one year, which would make the new ending date July 31st, 2026. And so, we need to make sure we put this forward in a motion. So, I move that pursuant to the agreement between the State Board of Education and Dr. Michael F. Rice, Superintendent of Public Instruction, the State Board of Education has engaged in an annual evaluation of Dr. Rice and has found his performance to be satisfactory or above pursuant to the contract.
Nice, second that.
I'm so used to our chair. It has been moved and seconded. And so, now we're looking for a discussion.
Well, I completely agree with the assessment that since my appointment, the process has been, in observing your leadership, has been invaluable to this, this board. You have been very open. You have been very communicative. You have been very, you've exhibited great knowledge and leadership and articulated things in such a layman's terms that I clearly understand what is going on as I learn more and more about the education process throughout the state. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I will say that, Dr. Rice, we do appreciate you. As we've told you, you can't get away from us. And we do truly appreciate you and the service that you provide to our students and leading this department. We definitely talked about the work that you're doing, which definitely showed in your report earlier today with the legislature and the governor, and lots of work to be done. And it is good that they are able to listen to the department and the advising of you. And so, we appreciate that. We also appreciate the way in which you communicate with each and every one of us. And it's a lot of communication, but it is necessary because this is very important work that we have before us. And so, these have been tumultuous times. We don't have to talk about the crisis of the pandemic. We can talk about the crisis of culture wars and things that have been lobbed and thrown at you. And we appreciate the way that you've handled that with great professionalism and with keeping the children center and focus. And so, we thank you. And with that, we'll turn it over to you, Liz, for a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, board. I appreciate your support. The next item on today's agenda is State and Federal Legislative Update. Mr. Marty Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs and veteran sports enthusiast, will lead the State and Federal Legislative Update. He'll be followed by Dr. Pritchett's hour-long report and Dr. Robinson's 45-minute report.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. As, Dr. Rice was pretty thorough in his report as to what's going on with the legislature. I'll just add a couple bills that are still on their way. One is Senate Bill 63, which would allow school districts to use sinking funds on transportation costs. It has passed the Senate and is waiting for a committee hearing in the House of Representatives. And there's two other bills on the move, expected to be heard possibly next week in the House Education Committee. One is House Bill 4157, which would allow for an excused absence to a student who missed school to play tabs at a military funeral. Expected to be reported or at least heard next week. And then, House Bill 4064 to encourage schools to teach cursive writing because they don't want any rogue cursive education going on in schools. So, they want... want any rogue cursive education going on in schools, so they want to have a curriculum. Sorry. But just that, so those are really the bills that are going through right now, in addition to what Dr. Rice mentioned. I also like just to reiterate that, add a comment, that the accelerated pace in which the legislative, legislature is moving to address its education agenda and the Department and State Board's education agenda, and they've been very receptive in listening and working with the state superintendent, Dr. Kennedy, our legislative liaison, and the Department as a whole to help achieve the goals of the top 10 Strategic Education Plan is very encouraging and it's exciting, actually. So that's my report. The State Board Legislative Committee meeting was on March 3. Chair Pritchett attended, obviously. Dr. Pugh was there. Mr. Robinson and Ms. Lipton were there also. And I will hand it over to Dr. Pritchett. Questions?
Thank you.
Please, if, if we could do questions first of Mr. Ackley and then pivot. Mr. McMillan.
Marty, for the bill regarding sinking fund uses for transportation. Since charter schools don't get property taxes, is there any talk of equity for charter schools, or is equity not something that's interested in some people?
Well, I'm not sure if it's not interested, it's not part of that bill.
Okay.
Because it deals directly with sinking funds.
Okay. So selective equity.
Yeah.
Got it.
Any other, Ms. McGowan, any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, very good. Other questions of Mr. Ackley? Once, twice, thrice, hearing none to Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. As Mr. Ackley indicated, we did have a March 3 legislative committee meeting. Dr. Robinson, Ellen Lipton, Dr. Pugh, Marty, Dr. Rice, and I was able to touch base with Nikki Snyder a couple hours after that because she was unable to attend, quote-unquote, attend. We were on teams at that point. And again, discussed many of these bills that are in the queue. Just so I'm clear for next month's agenda, I've got down that we would like to talk about minimum wage. Dr. Robinson has given me a possible resolution on libraries that we're going to talk about and also raise minimum wage, I've heard today. And I understand that there's legislation on repeal letter grades. I'm not sure at the pace some of these have been moving. We'll know at our next meeting whether that's gone through the process at this point or not, but.
We'll pass through one.
Personally, I can't be happier that they're talking about it and that it's possibly moving towards repeal. Our next meeting will be March 23, currently scheduled for 10 o'clock in the morning, a little bit different time. However, keep your eye out on emails because sometimes those have to be changed based on whether testimony is being asked for, and then we try to adjust so that staff are available for our meeting. So, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Dr. Robinson, to you.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay.
Forty-five minutes, huh?
Yeah.
Who is attending NASB? So we have one, two. That's the response to your question, to NASB, not to be confused with NAFS.
I do have something on your statement.
Do you have something else?
Yes, I just pulled it out of all my papers here. I just wanted to let the board know that the first PEP committee from NASB has met virtually, obviously. PEP is Public Education Positions. I've served on that NASB committee now. I think this is the third year. The committee basically looks at current issues facing education across the country, choose to do some research on it and write positions, or look at NASB past positions and possibly just tweak them. We just had our first meeting, but I wanted to let you know that the two issues we're going to be looking at this year are accountability and accreditation, kind of together, and high school redesign. So I will keep you updated. If you have any information on those or any feedback on that, we meet monthly. So I'm happy to pass that information on to the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett.
Just a note, because I'm looking at you, Dr. Pritchett, and I'm like, you're the legislative lead and going out as the NASB person, and we know that Mitch, Dr. Robinson, will be taking that position on. And it just reminds me of a question that came up. There will be multiple people who sit at various NASB tables, and Mitch, once you go to your first meeting, I'm sure you'll get a feel for it, and then we'll try to make sure that we feed how we're corresponding with NASB as well.
Any other thoughts? Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Any other thoughts? Ms. Lipton?
Just had one thought. We did hear public comment today regarding the examination of prior resolutions regarding mascots in schools that might be hurtful to students. And I think my notes said that the resolutions and/or statements occurred in 2003, 2006, and 2016.
Yes.
And being that it's now seven years later, that may be a topic for the Legislative Committee hearing. I believe we actually had one in '17, if I'm correct.
It does seem more recent.
Yeah, it's more recent. We had one in 2017. Okay. So, excuse me, six years rather than seven.
Other, thank you very much, Ms. Lipton. Anything else for the good of the group, for Mr. Ackley, Dr. Pritchett, Dr. Robinson? Here's to all of them. Sorry, it was a little graduate reference, for those of you old enough to remember that movie. We are to the point in our agenda where we are going to consider the three resolutions put onto the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. State Board of Education Resolution on Safer School Environments. Dr. Pritchett, would you like to move that?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Dr. Pritchett. We have a second from Dr. Robinson. Dr. Pritchett, to you to summarize.
As I indicated, this resolution is a, not a revision, but we took the October 11 approved resolution and added to it, recognizing the fact that unfortunately we had had another tragedy. We also added language in there dealing with suicides and the impact that suicides have and obviously dealing with gun violence related to suicide and the importance of mental health. So that's kind of a high-level view of the changes that were made to the October 11 resolution as we move.
Very good. So we have a motion, we have a second. We're into discussion of this resolution. Mr. McMillan, to you.
I have an amendment.
Okay.
Very good. And I have it printed out, but I could just read it, maybe that'll suffice. In the last paragraph of the Second Amendment Resolution, after Michiganers largely agree, last paragraph. Insert quote, though those being polled were likely not told of the necessary consequences of the proposal, such as that law-abiding citizens having their Second Amendment rights removed due to spurious accusations and without trial, and family members being harmed or murdered because a three-day waiting period was too long to wait to get a gun and protect their family.
Do you have copies?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you. So this would be inserted in the very last paragraph of the resolution. Okay. So we have an amendment. We have a proposed amendment to the base resolution from Mr. McMillan. Do we have a second?
You have a second.
We have a second. Any discussion there?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the amendment.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you know, sometimes these legislation, and when I was in the legislature, I saw it a lot, there's no understanding often of unintended consequences or intended consequence. Well, it would be understanding of the intended, but sometimes not mentioned. But certainly, the red flag laws or, I think it's Gun Violence Restraining Order, I think this one in Michigan, that's what it is in other states, Extreme Risk Protection Order, often are used against, you know, spurious, an ex-boyfriend or girlfriend or something that's used for malicious individuals to harass and endanger. As a result, you end up with police coming into a house that's for no particular, for no reason other than somebody, and somebody mentioning, oftentimes, I think there are some states that require the person to be identified, others it can be anonymous, so you don't even know who it is. There's at least a third of, in one forensic psychology journal, Behavior Science and the Law, at least a third were issued against innocent people. It's an article I'm reading of probably more. Also, it noted that it's disproportionately harms the poor because they cannot afford the attorney to go and get their rights back. So it disproportionately harms the poor in that instance. And then, you know, a three-day waiting period, there are certainly consequences. Somebody who hadn't thought about needing a gun, but all of a sudden feels that because of circumstances that they are now in danger, they go to get a gun, they have to wait three days, and something happens while they're waiting those three days. That is certainly something that can and has happened. So these, you know, when we cite polling, I'm quite certain that usually the poll company, A, is hired because by people who know and want the particular outcome, and so the questions are written for that outcome, but B, because very seldom is there any opposing views articulated during the polling. So I just wanted to point that out, and I thought it is important.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. So we have a motion, a second. We've begun discussion. Ms. Snyder, to you.
I would just support these amendments. I know I sat in a room full of women this weekend that would consider this a women's rights issue and described exactly what you're speaking of, Tom, this concept of what if the actual person who's in danger is falsely accused? And then what is our plan as a society for those three days for that person that's actually in danger that's now being falsely accused and they don't have an ability to protect themselves or defend themselves? Or their children? Many situations and stories that were told that say that this would negatively impact their ability to protect and defend themselves. So definitely support this amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Pugh?
And, you know, these are concerns that have been brought up. Were there amendments to the bills, or, I mean, were there additions to the bills where there is penalty for falsely accusing, for false accusations? It was something that Board Member Snyder just raised that, let me see if it's in here. I thought that there was language. Is there language in the bills that speaks to?
I know there are substitute bills that were adopted in committee before they were reported out to the Senate, and I can't speak definitively on that. I know there are several bills in the package, both in the House and the Senate.
Right.
That describe penalties. That may be one of them, but like I said, I can't speak definitively about that.
Right, I remember some of these issues being brought up, and there were ways that they were being addressed. And I think that there was punitive action against anyone who falsely accused someone.
It's a crime to make a false statement to a, to a member of law enforcement. So it's already a crime, and you could double down on that, I suppose, but it is already a crime, to your question. Yeah. Please.
Can I just, you know, I mean, that would be nice, but it's very subjective. As a conservative, I've been called by liberals mentally ill for some of my views, and I don't take that, you know, and I'm being serious, and they may very well be serious. It's very subjective. So they're gonna, you know, I don't know how you could say, they could just say, well, I thought he was mentally ill, I'm sorry. You know, I think it's very subjective and used in ways that, you know, just can take away the rights of individuals for no particular reason and with no repercussion as well.
Okay. Mr. Bullock, and then Ms. Snyder.
So what I will say is that while this is an eloquent amendment, it's not germane to the safer school resolution. If we're not, this resolution, this resolution is more an amendment to what is being channeled through the chambers of legislation than what this amendment is intended to do. And as we talk about unintended consequences and intended consequences, this is a resolution from us to acknowledge that we need safer schools. The amendment goes to a different issue, and so I would not accept this amendment moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Ms. Snyder, to you.
I would just say it is germane to the resolution because we're taking legislation that is being discussed in the legislature and applying it, while we may be applying it to our issue, it's still legislation that, you know, that we otherwise wouldn't be talking about if it weren't in the legislature. So, and back to the issue at hand about what it looks like to wait for three days if you've been falsely accused. Great that there's a crime for, you know, falsely accusing an individual, that should exist, but does that mean that a woman and her children die before that law is, you know, quote-unquote, broken? I just, we have to think about the unintended consequences of what we are saying in a resolution that we're using from a grander scale of legislation that is being discussed in the Capitol. So that's a real thing.
Okay, thank you very much. Other reflections on this amendment to the base resolution? Hearing none. Ms. Evans, this is a roll call vote on Mr. McMillan's amendment to the base resolution.
Mr. Bullock?
Negative.
Mr., excuse me, Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tillie? Motion fails.
Okay. Do we have any other amendments or discussions? Ms. Tillie, to you, please.
And Liz is going to.
If you could just give us one second to distribute. We've got a number of people who are visual learning. Thank you. All right, Ms. Tillie, to you for your proposed amendment.
Whereas according to every town, guns are the second-leading cause of death among children and teens in Michigan. In Michigan, an average of 89 children and teens die.
teens die by guns every year, and 52% of these deaths are homicides. In the U.S., 58% of all gun deaths among children and teens are homicides. Whereas, according to Brady, the annual gun violence impacting youth and teens from 1 to 17 years old is astronomical. On average, every year, 7,957 children and teens are shot in the United States. Among those, 1,839 children and teens die from gun violence. 992 are murdered. 6,294 children and teens survive gunshot injuries. 2,788 are intentionally shot by someone else and survive. 693 die from gun suicide. 166 survive an attempted gun suicide. 10 are killed by legal intervention. 101 are shot by legal inter-, intervention and survive. 99 are killed unintentionally. 2,893 are shot unintentionally and survive. 38 die, but the intent was unknown. 380 are shot and survive, but the, the intent is unknown.
So we have a motion from Ms. Tilly. Do we have a second to her motion?
Support.
So we have a motion from Ms. Tilly, support by Dr. Pugh. Ms. Tilly, to you, to speak to the amendment to the base resolution, number one, and to share where these, where this would be inserted, number two.
So, um, I, I feel like we have become hyper-aware to mass shootings, and rightfully so, especially here in Michigan with the Oxford and Michigan, um, Michigan State shootings. But we've become desensitized to the murders that happen every day. And, um, I really wanted to insert the data so we can look at what is happening every day in our country. And I got a chance to, um, research more data. Every two and a half, about every two and a half hours, a child or a teenager is killed from gun violence. Um, this, for me, this was a, this was my first organizing issue, social justice, justice issue. I think sometimes we get in a bubble, and we don't realize the things that some people, especially in the urban areas, are going through. Um, some of the neighborhoods are war zones where gun violence is normal every single day. So, really wanted the data so it could help the resolution stand out even more. I think we should be concerned with three things: policy, mental health, as well as, we haven't talked about, a cultural and social shift that needs to take place. I think it's gonna take a combination of all three of those things, but the data really supports the resolution, so.
Okay, and, and that's to the resolution, and you would insert these two, whereas's?
Um, to be the third and fourth whereas.
Very good. They'd be inserted, uh, before the very lengthy whereas associated with the statewide poll. All right? Very good. Um, thank you, Ms. Tilly. Other, um, other discussion, uh, by state board members?
On this, on the amendment? I mean, I just, I'm trying to find the, I put in the link, I've triple-checked it, and it comes up 404, not found. So I don't, I mean, I just don't know if it's in there or-
It is in there. Yeah, I mean, I-
I'd like to be able to verify that.
That's fine. I mean, I can tell you that we, we were on the site last night looking at the data. So, um-
Can it be cross-referenced with CDC?
Can it be cross-referenced with CDC?
So the, um, they actually use-
I think every town does.
-data from the CDC and another organization.
Every state.
I can forward the links to you.
Cornelius is there, ladies.
We'll take a, we'll take a moment. Board, uh, let's, let's do this. Um, while Ms. Tilly is forwarding the links, uh, we'll take a five-minute bathroom break, and we'll be back to, uh, check out the, uh, the links, um, in five quick minutes. All right? Give people a little bit of time, to be human.
Yeah, okay.
It's not a bad thing.
No.
Human's not-
On Thursday, Angela Joy, the one who's gonna be virtual.
This day was-
Yeah, yeah. She's, she'll be great. I think I showed you that book. Can I show you that book? Is there a re-?
No.
I'll grab it out of my office.
Is that the one that was there on the speakerphone?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where I'm here.
Yes, you did, okay. That's, actually, I just mentioned that.
I'm here, yeah.
Do you remember that?
Yeah.
This one's on Rachel Teacher of the Year.
Bringing it forward.
You did so much effort.
Moved up.
Did you get it?
Which one did you send it to? Oh, not yet.
Well, I went to everystat.org.
And I don't, I just wanted to make sure.
I've been trying to-
Okay, maybe it's still coming through.
It's not there, it's not.
So, um- I just- It may be worth it to ask.
Get a minute?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Oh my god, it's in the, it was in my junk. Maybe sent to multiple.
It's great, actually. It's exactly what I'm looking for.
I should've left this cookie back there, I wouldn't have eaten it.
It's too good.
I don't even like it.
Tell me.
Just kind of sold out.
Right, the fishbowl, but-
I have, like, real food, right now.
Well, yeah, you're a doctor of public health. I'm an old trumpet player, I want some junk food. I'd like a Manhattan.
Oh, that picture of you was really cool. I love that.
That was, that, that came out of, like, the town newspaper, and, like, some guy was just uploading old pictures so they didn't get deleted, and one of my old bandits found it inside of-
I don't hear the details.
I don't, I don't think so, because my details-
Uh, no, that's, that's already-
Have, like, enough context.
Can you imagine if you're-
People would be like, "Why was this taken?"
Not even service.
I want to remember your name.
I know there's something to do with drive.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, in the park, and I'm like, "I should be at the road."
Oh, okay.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fully dead.
Yeah, that's what I do. And then I forget that I was gonna plug it in, and my charger would be sitting right there.
All I know is-
I'm on a Zoom, and it comes-
That's all I got.
No, no, it'd be published.
That's what I'm saying.
I've never seen.
Actually, we have ours. Okay. Okay.
Fine, um, with, with that.
Well, I mean, I just, yeah, I read it, so these, whereas's are not, um, the substance of a, of a resolution, it's the, therefore be it resolved. So, these, whereas's, these particular ones are just statements of fact. I just read, not fact, I disagree with, uh, some of what's in here, because guns are inanimate objects, so they're not the second leading cause of death, uh, because guns are inanimate. So it's the people that use them that are, are the ones. Uh, so though I disagree with, uh, some of the, the points, uh, this is just a statement of fact. Every town, I read the exact sentence, so I don't have a problem putting it in.
Very good. So, so we appreciate Mr. McMillan's support on the, uh, on Ms. Tilly's amendment. Uh, Ms. Snyder?
I don't know, I didn't ask you to.
I'd support it, too, but I, I would go to everystat.org and, and look a little bit closer. It talks about intimate partner homicides. So, and a lot of the data there, by and large, then, would support the concept of thinking much more critically about the three days and understanding the importance of false accusation for intimate partner violence, because that's exactly what I was referring to. So-
Right.
When you know intimate partner violence is a huge issue, and homicides within that respect is a huge issue, then you have to consider the unintended consequences of what you're, of what you're saying and doing. So, um, a woman defending herself and protecting herself in this type of situation, which is clearly defined, within this data source is something that I would, um, you know, it, you may not consider it here today, but it's clearly not going to go away, and, and being able to defend yourself is an important right that we have. So-
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Tilly?
I, I'm not, um, disagreeing at all that that's an important, um, insensitive, you know, topic. I just, um, my concern with it, as far as this particular resolution, is we're focused on kids with the re-, resolution, not, um, domestic violence.
There's unintended consequences.
Yeah, it's gonna be there. I mean, it's, this legislation doesn't just address one, um, group of our people.
Okay, so we have a, um, we have an amendment to the base motion from Ms. Tilly, a second from Dr. Robinson. Um, I believe the second was from Dr. Pugh, thank you very much. Uh, but we appreciate Dr. Robinson willing to, to be a second second. Um, any other discussion?
He's second to second.
He's second to the second. Um, it's a little bit like seconding the emotion.
Yeah.
Um, hearing no more discussion. Ms. Evans, this is a roll call vote on Ms. Tilly's amendment to the base resolution.
Buck?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Uh, yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Okay, we are back to the base resolution. Is there any more discussion? Hearing, please.
I do, um, to, to Board Member Tilly's point, um, is adding right up at the top, um, whereas students, staff, families, and communities have been tremendously affected by the mass shootings that take place in communities across this state, and at Oxford High School on November 30th, 2021, so on and so forth. And then, going down to the last sentence, the tragedies at Oxford High and, and MSU collectively resulted in the deaths of-
So it is an amendment to the first whereas, to be inclusive of other community mass shootings beyond those at Oxford and MSU. Any, um, so we have a, we have a-
It's in the, it's in the first sentence, so it would be that second line, affected by the mass shootings that take place in communities across this state.
And that took place.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
This state or the?
So, we're-
Across the, across the state.
We're adding that-
And that took place.
Take place and that took place at all.
Right. So she's adding the notion of, um, shootings beyond Oxford and-
And MSU.
-Michigan State. Yep.
Which ones are those, the mass shootings?
You, you're referring to shootings?
Shootings, mm-hmm.
You're just referring to mass shootings? Uh, which, which ones are you referring to?
I'm referring, referring to shootings that take place, uh, in communities across the state.
Can you-
Shootings are not mass shootings.
Okay, well, let's-
Can you restate it?
Yep. So, affected by shootings that take place in communities across this state, and the mass shootings that took place at Oxford High School.
So we, we have a, um, a, a motion from, uh, Dr. Pugh. Do we have a second? We have a second from Dr. Robinson. Do we have any discussion? Dr. Pugh, does the, does the motion, um, stand on its face?
Well, I could do another. I was, there, the, be it further resolved-
Okay.
-in school safety to pass safer gun laws, which do not promote the hardening of schools, and which include the aforementioned common sense gun measures, um, which Michiganders largely agree, to make students and staff safer in Michigan schools. So after safe, I'm on the last, be it further resolved, it's the, um, second to the last full line, safer gun laws.
Uh-huh.
Comma. Comma, which do not promote the hand, the hardening of schools, comma, and which include the aforementioned common sense gun measures.
Okay, you want to consider those individually or separately?
I, I could, if, if I need to, I can do it separately.
Okay. Um, so we, we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second from Dr. Robinson. Um, if, if it is the board's druthers, we can hear them together. If there's any disagreement to that, we will separate the, the two and hear them as two individual amendments. This is your time to say, "I would like them separated." Not hearing any effort to do so. Ms. Snyder, to you.
Can you just clarify what you mean by hardening? Because Governor Whitmer funded, uh, a large increase for SROs in schools, so should school districts turn away that money?
She, she funded, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you-
She wrote in her budget, um, money for SROs for school districts-
and which include the aforementioned common sense gun measures, um, which Michiganders largely agree to make students and staff safer in Michigan schools. So after safe, I'm on the last be it further resolved. It's the, um, second to the last full line, safer gun laws.
Uh-huh.
Comma.
Comma, which do not promote the hand, the hardening of schools, comma, and which include the aforementioned common sense gun measures.
Okay, you want to consider those individually or separately?
I, I could, if, if I need to, I can do it separately.
Okay. Um, so we, we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second from Dr. Robinson. If, if it is the board's druthers, we can hear them together. If there's any disagreement to that, we will separate the, the two and hear them as two individual amendments. This is your time to say I would like them separated. Not hearing any, uh, effort to do so. Ms. Snyder, to you.
Can you just clarify what you mean by hardening? Because Governor Whitmer funded, uh, a large increase for SROs in schools. So should school districts turn away that money?
She, she funded, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
She wrote in her budget, um, money for SROs for school districts. So are we suggesting that school districts turn away that money?
Well, let, let's back up. It, it's a, it's a recommendation. It's not a budget yet. It's, uh, it's the governor's budget recommendation. It hasn't been passed into law. So it is somewhat hypothetical.
Right.
As to whether it's going to end up in the fiscal year 24.
For SROs.
Right, yeah.
So that's traditionally part of the definition of hardening. Is that what you're referring to?
I believe that, well, let me, let me say it like this. I know that the governor will make sure that school resource officers, um, those schools that want them will, will get them, um, that they will be adequately and appropriately trained. And part of that training will make sure that they're able to refer out to the appropriate, um, healthcare professionals. The governor has also put an, an absorbent amount of budget in, um, MDHHS. She's shifted some dollars, um, to make sure that dollars that should go, um, from, uh, police professionals to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. She's made those proposals, um, as well. And so I believe that school districts, families, uh, will, and, uh, parents, um, on the local level will be able to make those decisions. But I know that there will be room for those districts and those parents who are concerned, uh, with making sure that they have the right professionals, uh, in their buildings to have access to those, those professionals. And the governor's budget, uh, does allow for, for all of that.
So just to clarify, though, that wouldn't, if we write that in this statement that, that schools shouldn't harden, that's in direct conflict with, with that type of nuanced discussion. So if we want to have that nuanced discussion, we need to write that in here.
I disagree. Um, I think we had some conversation here. Um, there were presentations that were provided and the department is, um, uh, enhancing, um, professional staff and making sure that they're trained, making sure that they're in the building. And so I think that we'll see a lot of, um, movement as it relates to, uh, mental health professionals being referred, um, to by police officers, um, school resource officers. Um, and so I, I don't agree with that.
So I wouldn't.
Your interpretation.
Yeah, I wouldn't support saying we don't recommend hardening if Whitmer has budgeted for that and that's what ends up passing.
So, so let me ask you a question. Would you like the two separated so that they, we can vote on the?
I mean, we already did that. We can't go back, right?
We, the, it, it's a, we're, we're trying to get to the best resolution as a state board. If you are, if, if the board, if the board's druthers are to, um, to, uh, about the one than the other, who would like to be on record as be voting differently about the one than the other, we can do that. Um, the, the first piece was on the whereas and it was to acknowledge that there are shootings beyond those at Oxford and Michigan State. The second was on the now therefore be it resolved, which, um, which is, which is different and which talks about the need to address security, but not to do so in a way, um, as, as Dr. Pugh noted, that, that, that makes schools, um, these, um.
Professionals acting out of their line.
Right, and so, and so it, it's, it's fine for, um, for the board to consider these two elements separately before they vote on the full resolution.
I, I'm good with separating them.
Okay, so, so we are gonna be, we are gonna, we are, we are going to, the, the, the move, the motion is from Dr. Pugh. The second is, uh, to Dr. Robinson. I don't hear any, I don't see any, um, disagreement with the separation thereof. So his seconding continues. It is solely on the first whereas to include shootings, um, across the state and by extension across the country, um, beyond Michigan State and Oxford. Um, is there anything more on that first whereas?
Yeah. I guess I'm gonna vote no because I'd rather not water down, uh, the, the shootings that happened at Oxford and, uh, MSU. So I don't, don't think we should be watering those down.
I understood. And, and I, I, I hear that and those of us who have gone to funerals of people that have been killed, um, uh, in, you know, other communities, um, feel that, feel that deaths are deaths and, and shooting deaths are shooting deaths.
I, I, I didn't understand watered down. I'm a, I graduated in 1985 and they didn't call them mass school shootings, but there were school shootings. Murray Wright, 1985, Mumford High, 1984. And I know there, they would be considered by the families and the friends as a mass shooting. I lost a lot of friends.
And, and if I might add, um, I have, uh, families who do, uh, feel that, that they are forgotten. And I, and in listening to the families and the survivors from Oxford and from MSU, they would not feel that a life loss is watering down what they experienced. And I think, uh, Board Member Tilly used the, the word, um, dehumanizing. And I hear a lot of friends and a lot of people who live where I live and went to school with me and moms who have lost children, who, who I, uh, and, and parents, um, who, who do often feel that way, that they are forgotten. Um, and I, I know you didn't mean it that way, but, uh, that didn't quite come out right. Um, so.
So, um, we are, we are considering the, the first, uh, the amendment to the first whereas solely. Um, roll call vote, Ms. Evans.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Same.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and we are to, uh, Dr. Pugh's second amendment on the, um, on the last, uh, therefore be it resolved. If you could reread that for us, please.
Be it further resolved that the State Board of Education strongly urges the state legislature to adopt the governor's budget recommendations for additional funding for children's mental health and school safety to pass safer gun laws, which do not promote the hardening of schools and which include the aforementioned common sense gun measures on which Michiganders largely agree to make students and staff safer in Michigan schools.
Okay, so we have a, a motion. Do we have a second associated with that? Dr. Robinson seconds that as well. Discussion, uh, Dr. Pugh, to you.
And I don't want to put, uh, Ms. O'Day on the spot, but I have spoken with some of the governor's folks and I know that this is a concern of hers. And I don't know if you can speak to some of the things that the governor is doing to take into consideration the fact that, yes, schools and parents, some do want, uh, school resource officers, others, um, may not at all, but there are some who want to make sure, uh, if there are, um, law enforcement that come in contact with, with children in whatever way, uh, students, that they know how to refer, um, to the right professional. Um, and so it, it, it lends to the mental health and, uh, school safety. And I know that there has been some budget items that I believe moved from the, the state, Michigan, uh, um, state police to mental, or, um, MDHHS, uh, for that purpose. I don't know if you can speak to any of that. We can't.
Um, sure, I can speak very briefly. Um. Oh, now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, I can speak, um, very briefly to that. Um, the $25 million that, um, Nikki referenced it for school resource officers was part of the fiscal year 23 budget was, uh, for three years for school districts. That money was awarded by MSP. Um, it is not included in the governor's fiscal year 24 budget recommendation, but that $25 million that was specific for school resource officers has been repurposed under section 31N, which has been a longstanding budget item that allows intermediate school districts to help local districts hire mental health professionals to support all students in schools. Um, so we heard from parents at the Michigan Parent Council over the last year that direct connection between mental health and school safety. And so there are a lot of investments that recognize that and recognize the diversity that we have across the school districts in our state, which is why last year there was the, um, the shift to funding under section 31AA and section 97, which are discretionary mental health and school safety funds that allow districts to make investments in whatever is best to support students in their community when it comes to mental health and school safety.
Thanks, we're happy we put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Dr. Ray.
Um, thank you very much, Ms. O'Day. Ms. Tilly.
Just wanted to add to that issue. Um, in the urban areas, we've had that for years. And when I was in high school, we had, you know, law enforcement present in the schools. And I know schools still today ha- have it. So that, it's normal in the urban areas. But I think that it will be a, a, a big help with, um, what we've been going through with mass, mass shootings.
Well, and, and to the issue of SROs, which is not precisely the focus of this resolution, but it is sort of the sub-focus at this, at this moment. Um, I've, I've had SROs in, um, all the districts in which I've served, certainly in my two superintendencies. Uh, but the SROs don't have to approach children heavy or hard.
Right.
Um, in fact, um, for them to be successful, uh, they don't do that at all. They develop good relationships with kids. Kids appreciate them. They appreciate the kids. There's a good rapport and kids feel safer as, as a result of their presence. Um, it's not necessarily how they would feel if they met a police officer on the street. And so I think this is relating, to your point, that, um, um, everything that one person feels is hardening is not necessarily the perception of, of another, of another person. Two people can do the same job in a very, very different way. Yeah. Um, other reflections on, okay, so we have, um, we have Dr. Pugh's second amendment as, um, uh, seconded by Dr. Robinson. We've had discussion, any more discussion? Hearing none. A, uh, roll call vote on the second, uh, Dr. Pugh amendment.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
And Tilly? Motion carries.
So do we have any other amendments to the base resolution on safer school environments introduced by Dr. Pritchett? Hearing and seeing none. Um, this is a roll call vote.
Discussion on the base motion.
Please.
Yeah. Uh, for reasons, uh, mentioned in my res, in my amendment, um, you know, as far as this being an extremely, these are dangerous laws that are being proposed. Uh, people will be hurt if they, uh, if they pass. Uh, there will be unintended consequences. They will be used to harass, to remove, uh, the rights of citizens without consequence. There, there won't be any consequences, uh, for falsely making accusations for, uh, you know, because it's very subjective, uh, areas where I, it, it would be almost impossible. Wish it could, but it, it would be impossible and I don't think the legislation, uh, uh, considers that. Also, I believe it's probably anonymous. I know at least one state and probably the others that don't allow them to be anonymous so that there can be consequences, uh, for falsely accusing. Um, and then, like I said, separately, the three day waiting period, uh, certainly will bring harm, uh, to people who want to defend their family. The one about imposing criminal penalties or fines for those who buy firearms for another person. Anybody who's bought a firearm knows that that's illegal already. So I mean, but yeah, for, I, I just think that, and, and we've talked about it and I think some people even agreed with the safe storage that, you know, this becomes a reason why government can come in and inspect homes is I want to see if you're, you know, storing a firearm appropriately. Um, you know, who gets to define what safe storage is? Again, these are all, a lot of these, you know, we could, we could make things safer without, uh, assaulting rights. And so I, I think that, uh, this package is dangerous, uh, and, uh, and obviously doesn't consider unintended consequences. And again, I think the poor will suffer much, uh, over disproportionately when it comes to, uh, you know, extreme risk protection orders, because they won't have the means to go and, and just, and rectify unjust situations that are going to occur with this, with these laws.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Dr. Robinson.
The, the largest and most comprehensive study of gun policies and intended or unintended consequences was done by the RAND Corporation and they looked at exactly the issue of waiting periods. They had three different determinations they could make. No evidence, inconclusive or moderate evidence. And they found that there was absolutely no evidence that waiting periods had any negative effect on gun safety, on the, the act of someone using a gun in defense. Sorry, not gun safety, gun defense. The act of using a firearm to defend their home or their family. There were no instances of that happening according to the RAND Corporation. So I know we're trying to look at very specific examples from the research base. There isn't any for that. Um, there is, however, a moderate, uh, moderate to strong evidence that, um, that suicide is negatively affected, which is to say that there are far more suicides when people, um, don't have to wait for three days or five days. So I think if we're, if interested in having evidence-based discussions here, um, th- this is a good chunk of research for us to look at and I think it, it sheds some, some light on this issue, which is certainly a complex one.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion on the base resolution?
Yeah. Sometimes I can't not. There are things said that are even more dangerous being said. The laws that we have in place, mass shootings are happening at an obscene rate. People are dying with the rules and laws that are in place. That doesn't discount the things that were being said at the table, but something has to be addressed. And we think that, I don't think, because I grew up in the poor environment where the, the, the school shooting wasn't called a mass shooting then. It's just urban America being urban America. And so all of those things, getting guns, access to guns, storage of guns, in today's 2023 society, these are common sense laws. These are things that just make sense in our protection of our children in a school environment and their day to day. And that's all we're doing with a resolution that says that. So I, I just want to keep it simple, just keep it real simple because it's more dangerous to keep the rules that we have in place.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bullock. Any, anyone else for the good of the group? Hearing and seeing none, this is a vote on Dr. Pritchett's resolution, uh, on safer school environments as amended by Ms. Tilly's amendment and Dr. Pugh's amendments. Uh, Ms. Evans, a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Absolutely.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Much. The second, um, resolution or statement of consideration is the statement of support for mandatory training and mentoring. And Dr. Robinson, uh, would you like to read the, this resolution?
Someone?
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from, um, from, uh, Bullock, Lipton and Pritchett all at once. It was a photo finish. Um, discussion to you, Dr. Robinson.
Um, I think the, the statement stands on its own. I think we need, um, we have had paid for and mandated, uh, training for other school personnel over the years. I've been involved with the, uh, teacher mentoring programs for, for a long time. Um, and I, it, it looks like what we have here is support for new school board member and new public library member training and mentoring. And I think that's a great idea and it's long overdue.
So, um, to, to clarify, this motion supports mandated and funded new teacher mentoring, new principal mentoring, new superintendent mentoring and supports mandatory and funded new school board member and new public library member board training mandated in each of the five cases, funded in each of the five cases. Currently, only one of the five is mandated, and that is teacher mentoring. Currently, only one of the five is funded, and that is new school board member training. And it is not mandatory new school board member training. It is optional new school board member training, optional school board member training. So this resolution were to come to fruition in the state legislature would move to the mandating of four other types of mentoring training, number one, and the funding of four other types of mentoring were training as well. That is the resolution from Dr. Robinson. We have a tripartite second to A, to B, to C. Mr. McMillan, to you.
I have an amendment inserting after the last word in the statement, which is "and the public." So it's saying this training, mandatory training, comma, "as long as the training is not done by the Michigan Association of School Boards who condone their national organization calling parents domestic terrorists."
Okay, so we have a, thank you very much. So Mr. McMillan's proposed amendment is to the very end of this resolution. After the last word in the statement, "public," he recommends inserting, "as long as the training," we're talking about the school board member training presumably, "is not done by the Michigan Association of School Board Members who condone their national organization calling parents domestic terrorists." So that is the, that's the proposed amendment. Do we have a second?
So moved.
We have a second. Any discussion? Mr. McMillan, to you.
To speak to it. You know, we're all familiar with this, what happened. The Biden administration sent FBI agents to some of the local school boards because of, and, you know, with the encouragement of the National School Board Association, calling parents domestic terrorists. Over half of the state, you know, the state's associations of school boards left the National School Board Association over this situation. Michigan was not one of them. They were silent. They had no problem. There was no, you know, calling anything a problem with it. So I just think that this is not an organization that should be training local school boards members. And so I would say that, you know, that we certainly don't want local school boards being instructed that parents should be treated as domestic terrorists.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. We've had some speaking out associated with the amendment. Any other discussion associated with the amendment? Any other?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would echo support for that. I had read an email last month of a constituent that emailed our entire board requesting that taxpayer dollars not be used to further education, training, or concepts that are values-based. But I would also argue divisive, too, which is something we've talked about at this table from a theory standpoint. When we bake divisiveness and value-based types of teaching and training, it's not, it discriminates. It's not okay. So, but clearly, it's very offensive for an association that would be training school board members or library members. And I would even argue, talking about the concept that we should have various options of all types of trainings, from which one could choose, right, whether you're being mentored as a teacher, principal, or a new superintendent, or being trained as a new school board member in order to ensure that the government isn't using our tax dollars to streamline everything in a universal way. So very much supportive of this amendment, but also supportive of training and mentoring. I do think those are important things.
So, thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Is there any other discussion before I just share a little bit about mentoring in the profession and training in the profession? Because I think there's a little bit of education that needs to take place, that our teachers, our new teachers, our new principals, and our new superintendents, new teachers and new principals certainly, are mentored within their districts. New superintendents typically across districts. Districts not having more than one superintendent, as a rule, at any given time. So Ms. Hanson may mentor a teacher, two.
Mentor two.
There you go. And Ms. Trozen may mentor teachers in her district. That typically is not a state function. Now, it could be state statute to require the mentoring or to fund the mentoring, but the state doesn't do the mentoring, and there's no state organization that's responsible for that mentoring. The same would be true for principal mentoring. The same would be true for superintendent mentoring. It was true when I was mentored 21 years ago in New Jersey as a new superintendent. With respect to training, which is what this narrow amendment is about, we should stay focused on this particular piece. The training of new library board members would be done by a library association. The training of new school board members would be done by a school board association, as it's done across the country. It would be people who are focused on the work of library board members or school board members, who would be responsible for the training associated therewith. Whatever you feel about the National School Boards Association is completely legitimate. People have their right to feel however they choose about the National School Boards Association. But the Michigan Association of School Boards was not involved in the circumstance which is being referred to. And the Michigan Association of School Boards, for many years, has been a valued member of the Education Management Group and remains such, and is responsible for very strong training of school board members across the state. I just think it's important to put that on the record. If you don't like NSBA, don't like NSBA. But I wouldn't hold MASB responsible for whatever perceived sins or transgressions you feel that NSBA engaged in.
I need to reply to that, then. I mean, obviously, over half of the states that have like an MSAB disagree with you. They did something. MSAB sat there, and their silence was deafening, and it was affirming. So they showed no problem with parents being called domestic terrorists by their national organization. Over half of the other states, those organizations did, and they left over it. So, you know, to say that they had nothing to do with it, it's completely false. They obviously were one of the ones that had no problem with it because they didn't make a statement. And, I mean, I totally disagree with you.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder, and then Dr. Pugh.
Would it behoove the board to separate these two? I understood everything you were just saying. And it's one thing to support mentoring of teachers, principals, and superintendents, and then to put it together with something that's so clearly offensive to many people. And I mean, again, I would argue not only MASB should have spoken out about what NSBA said, but our board should have, our state superintendent should have. But if we really want to have a bipartisan discussion and some agreement here, you could separate these two statements, just like we did with the last resolution.
I'm not sure what you're separating. There's only one statement.
Well, no, you actually just differentiated mentoring at the local level and training at the local level, two different things.
This amendment, but this amendment is solely about the training.
No, the first paragraph is about mentoring.
As long as the training is not done.
Oh, correct. So we can revisit what I'm talking about when we go back to the original statement. That's fine.
Okay. I appreciate that. So we have, we've had discussion on this. Dr. Pugh, I believe it's to you.
And I don't know if this was said or not, but I'll say it just in case. We talked about the tumultuous times that we've just come through. I hope that we've come through. And there were parents that did threaten the lives of colleagues of mine who were health professionals, board members. And so I do want to call that out, because you make it seem as if that didn't happen and that we're talking about parents in general. And so I just want to make sure that we're clarifying that, that we are not talking about parents in general. We're talking about something that we saw that happened in our history that just shouldn't be. That's it.
Okay. So there shouldn't be with, there was a period at the end, or shouldn't be?
There shouldn't be a period. And I'll call the vote.
All right. Thank you very much. So we've got a call of a question, and I don't hear anybody disagreeing with that. This is a vote on Mr. McMillan's mandate, this is a vote on Mr. McMillan's amendment to the base resolution inserting the words, "as long as the training is not done by the Michigan Association of School Boards who condone their national organization calling parents domestic terrorists." Ms. Evans, a roll call vote.
Bullock? Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Absolutely.
Tilly?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. We're back to the base statement on the importance of mandatory mentoring and training. Ms. Snyder?
I move to separate this statement of support into two separate statements. The first being one that pertains strictly to supporting mentoring of new teachers, principals, and superintendents. And the second being the second paragraph regarding new public library member board training and new school board member training.
Do we have a motion by Ms. Snyder? Do we have a second?
Support.
We have a second by Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder, to you for any support thereof.
As I stated, within the amendment that Tom had offered, I think that we can separate the two so they aren't confused.
Okay. Any other discussion associated therewith? This is Dr. Pritchett.
I just need clarification. So you're recommending that we take that first paragraph, for lack of a better term, vote on it by itself, take the second paragraph, vote on it by itself.
Yes, you could say Michigan State Board of Education statement of support of mandatory training, and then a second one would be of mandatory mentoring.
I just wanted to make sure I did straighten my head. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Lipton?
I oppose that suggestion of separation. When I was a state representative, I had the distinct honor of being able to represent four different school districts. And what I came to understand, and as I have continued this past decade, as I have been working intimately with school districts that work hand and glove with their promised zones, that the best shot for our children is a well-functioning educational ecosystem. That includes mentored and trained teachers, mentored and trained principals, mentored and trained superintendents, and mentored and trained school board members. I always found it interesting that people who ran for office seemed to think that by virtue of the fact that they won an election, that somehow that miraculously taught them or inculcated them with all of the knowledge that they would need to know in order to have an opinion about something as profoundly important as the education of our children. I always found that very interesting, because I, for one, have practiced in a profession for my entire career that mandates continuing education and the importance of honing your craft through mentoring and training. And so I think that this statement is not only important, but particularly important for this body that purports to speak through its statements and resolutions on an overall vision for education of the state. And so I think that it is completely appropriate. I applaud the maker of it, and I think that it should stay just as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Any other discussion associated with this, with Ms. Snyder's proposed amendment to decouple the first paragraph from the second paragraph and to make separate considerations, separate statements for voting? Okay. Hearing none. Ms. Evans, a roll call vote on Ms. Snyder's amendment.
Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly stepped away, so absent. Motion fails.
We have, we're back to the base statement. Any other discussion associated therewith? Mr. McMillan?
I guess I'm curious as to what mandatory means. Like, if they don't do it, will they not be a school, a board member? Will the democratic process be subverted and they'll be removed? Will they be fined? Also, if the, you know, if the district says, I don't, you know, want to, you know, this. And who defines what that means? You know, what, is it 20 hours? Is it two hours? Is it by this group? Is it by that group? And the, you know, I mean, I guess I was being funded. But I guess, is there any indication as to what the consequences are? If this, you know, I'm always leery when the state mandates stuff, even if they fund it, the removal of local control in many ways. So I just, you know, there may be certain instances where that is important, but I just am curious as to the consequences of this.
Well, there are five.
I was wondering if the maker of the statement should answer that.
Mr. Maker, Dr. Maker? To you, Dr. Robinson.
I didn't write the statement.
Okay. Fair enough. So we're back to the chair. The feeling on the part of the education community broadly writ is that we would benefit from the mentoring and training of people in very, very important positions in, as Ms. Lipton points out, the education ecosystem, including but not limited to teachers, principals, superintendents, school board members, and our outstanding state librarian, Randy Riley, suggested new school board, new library board members.
I just want to know the consequences, that's all.
So.
Are they removal or not?
Not. I'm not sure that there's anything that would permit the removal of an elected official from office as a student training. You, the mandating would have to be determined specifically by the state legislature, and the mandating for new teacher mentoring, new principal mentoring, and new superintendent mentoring. mentoring would be different than that for new school board member training.
I'm talking about the school board.
Right, understood. So that, I think would be, would end up distilling into a strong encouragement because I think at the end of the day, there is no legal way to compel an elected official to move from a state of fledgling knowledge to a state of greater knowledge.
Or it may not be greater knowledge, based, depending on who does the indoctrination or the teaching.
That's fair. I mean, you know, most of us, most of us in an education space view teaching as teaching. Ms. Lipton.
I'm going to make it very simple, and this is probably just me being an attorney, which I can't necessarily help. When something is mandatory, it means that it's mandatory, okay? It doesn't necessarily have to be coupled with an enforcement. For example, you can mandate that attorneys take CLA and you can also mandate that they report it. And if they don't take CLA and report that they don't take it, it's simply a reporting requirement and there's no removal, not even any fine. So I think that the statement, I mean, I don't think it can be any more simple to understand and one not need look for issues that simply don't present themselves in the clear language of the statement.
Fair enough.
Well, I mean, I'll end with, can I end with one? I mean, if it's mandatory, then we could look up the dictionary word of mandatory, but I mean, I think that means must or you have to take it. So obviously if it's not mandatory, which it sounds like it's not, because there won't be any consequences, then why use the word mandatory? But whatever. I mean, I oppose it because of.
Because the imposition of consequences is distinctly separate from the imposition of the requirement.
The one doesn't require the other. And the fact of the matter is that this is a resolution, first and foremost, not about political points, but about the strengthening of people in new positions and the need to help nurture them into a place where they are stronger. I think this was reflected in an earlier presentation today from our innovative ed prep programs. I thought that was very, very powerful, the work that they're each doing with teachers in their first three years. Those are very, very difficult years. And, you know, when you're 21, 22, 23, 24 years old, you come out, you think everybody can teach except for you, and that's not true. But that doesn't stop you from teaching. It's very, very hard. And that's not the sole province of the thinking of new teachers. It's also new principals, it's new superintendents, it's new school board members, it's new library board members. And each of these people needs to be lifted up and helped to become stronger in their professionalism. That's all this is. It's a statement of aspiration in a fashion, more than, more than anything else. It's not to the nitty gritty of enforcement, which is properly the province of the legislative body, which would create the mandates. Anything more for the good of the group? If not, if we could have a roll call vote on the resolution as put forward by Dr. Robinson.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
This is the amendment.
No.
This is the call.
Thank you, yes, I'm sorry. Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. We are at the third and final of our resolution slash statement that were added at the beginning of the board meeting. This is in support of Michigan Crown Act. Dr. Pugh, would you like to re-move it?
Sure. You want me to read it also?
Well, I want you, I want you to move it initially.
Thank you.
Very good. So you've got, you're moving it?
I'm moving it.
Let's get a second and then back to you. Second to Mr. Bullock and then back to you for reading and discussion.
Whereas Michiganders have faced discrimination because of the way that they choose to wear their hair, whereas four studies conducted by Michigan State University show a bias against black women with natural hairstyles in job recruitment, whereas Michigan State Board of Education supports all student learning in schools free of discrimination, harassment, and bullying, whereas state Senator Sarah Anthony introduced Senate Bill 90, known as the Crown Act, creating a respectful and open world of natural hair in order to eliminate hair discrimination or the denial of employment and educational opportunities because of hair texture or protective hairstyles, including but not limited to braids, locks, twists, or bantu knots. Whereas there are 20 states and several municipalities that have passed the Crown Act to provide legal protections against race-based hair discrimination in workplaces and schools, whereas Michigan's Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act, as recently amended by the state legislature, pending governor's signature, will prohibit discrimination in employment, education, housing, and full and equal enjoyment of the goods, services, facilities, privileges, advantages, or accommodations of a place of public accommodation or public service because of religion, race, color, national origin, age, sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity or expression, height, weight, familial status, or marital status. Now therefore be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education supports the passage of Senate Bill 90, which would amend Michigan's Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act to add race is inclusive of traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair texture and protective hairstyles. For purposes of this definition, protective hairstyles includes but is not limited to such hairstyles as braids, locks, and twists.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. We have a motion, we have a second, we have it read into the record. Would you like to share additionally?
Just that we would be the 21st state. We do have children who are in schools who have been impacted by their cultural expression. We had a child that was, their hair was cut without their parents' permission, that just went through the legal system. And so Michigan is one of 30 states that doesn't have this protection and this is needed. This is an opportunity for educators and school administrators to make sure that they are engaging on this issue, but also just making sure that they're, again, providing safe and supportive learning environments for all children. This is another opportunity to make sure that we're not overly suspending children, but that children are able to participate fully and, again, not having to worry about cultural expression or just being. So that is all that I have to add at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Snyder, to you.
I support this. I would even go further just to explore a little bit here, not so much as a reflection of race. I mean, I have a son who wants to grow a mullet. Never thought I would entertain that, but he's very interested in this mullet phase. So, but you've also got groups of people who want tattoos and piercings and the concept of just be and don't be judged and don't be discriminated against, I think is really at the heart of this. So I am supportive of it.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Other, Mr. Bullock?
I'll just say, we have worked on this for a long time and I would even credit not just Senator Sarah Anthony, but Senator Erica Geis and others. I was the chairman in my former life of the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus and this was a cause we took to. I know of the story here in Michigan where the teachers just cut the young lady's hair because the teacher didn't like it. I don't know, it was punishment of some sort. There was a young man wrestling in a wrestling match. He gets to the championship and they make him cut his dreads in order to proceed. So he had to make a decision, cut my hair or wrestle while he's winning the championship. So these are things that.
Are real.
Really have affected people in a different way from someone else's viewpoint that seems extreme. And so we're just trying to level the playing field of cultural differences. The Elliott Larson rules in place to allow everyone to be treated fairly equal in this great place we call Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Any other, any other reflections?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly.
First, I want to say thank you, Pam, for bringing this to the table. I think this is a very important piece. It's important to know, for young people to know that how they see themselves and how they want to be reflected in the world is okay. And when I ran for office, I was, for this seat, I was wearing braids and there were multiple people that told me I needed to take the braids out because I was running statewide. And I totally refused because I said there were young girls that needed to see me in braids so they could see themselves and know that they could run for office or do whatever they wanted to do and be accepted and be okay. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Mr. McMillan?
I guess I'm just curious, I mean, how, like Nick, Ms. Snyder mentioned about a mullet. I mean, what if it's a customer-facing business and they don't want somebody to wear a mullet or their hair sticking up because they think it could impact the business? Would this prevent the business saying, actually, that's, you know, that would be something that could hurt our business, so we don't want you having your hair in a mullet or sticking up or? I, I'm just curious, does it mean that they're not going to be allowed to do something like that?
Well, I think in the absence of the AG here to opine on that, we might use our single attorney on the board to reflect preliminarily on that. I think the focus of this was primarily in schools where children are judged and reprehensibly judged based on their hair. But, you know, to the question.
So Elliott Larson is the state civil right law, civil rights law. And so as a precondition, it requires a discrimination of a protected class. And so that's why the way that this was written, it talks about it as the style of hair being a cultural and racial expression. And therefore, the other situations that are being discussed would have to be dealt with in perhaps an advisory memo to school districts in terms of their school dress policy and how they wear their hair, what have you. But that would not necessarily be an appropriate amendment to the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act under state law and definition of a protected class. How you wear your hair in and of itself is, does not give you civil rights protection under state and federal constitutional principles.
Thank you. Other reflections, questions, comments, concerns?
Just before.
Yes, please.
We vote. I guess it just sounds very subjective to me, elevating hair. I mean, I don't know what the unintended consequences are. I don't know if wrestling, if you have dreadlocks, it gives you an advantage because the person against you might, I have no idea. So I'm not an expert in this. Usually when we're voting on bills, we have people that staff that research and that I research. I honestly don't know enough about it and just elevating it to a civil right, I mean, I think there should be consequences for cutting somebody's hair that they shouldn't have at school. It sounds horrible. If the school doesn't have a consequence for that, maybe it's because the union won't allow it or something, but there should, there should be consequences for that, there should be consequence. But in some areas, it might not have consequence, maybe it shouldn't. So I just, I think there's probably unintended consequences when you elevate it to hair to a civil right.
I think it was a million-dollar consequence.
Well.
Well, then I bet they won't do it again.
The first people to elevate the hair weren't the wearers of the hair. It were, it was people who were finding fault with the hair. And you fortunately don't have to walk this walk.
That's true.
But, and nor do I.
I could be discriminated against.
Nor do I.
And I'd be fined.
Understood. But there, but, but, but the joking aside, there are young people who deal with this every day and they discuss it on a regular basis, how they're judged simply because of a portion of their wrapper, a portion of their exterior. And it's unacceptable and it affects their sense of security and sense of efficacy and sense of security and sense of well-being in schools. It's not okay and we need to address it.
And I think one of the key words is natural hair. I mean, and I, what we're talking about, these are pieces that have, this conversation is rooted in history. It may sound like it's something simple, but black hair, there's a lot of history behind that. Tiffany brings up some good points. I don't know, Ellen, you might have woke up and washed your hair and you walked out the door. If I get up and wash my hair and walk out the door, you all will, I'm gonna do it one day.
At your own risk.
And hope that I make it home and, you know, but anyway.
So I'll take it a step further. Growing up in Detroit is one lens of seeing the world. I've lived in Albuquerque, New Mexico, where my peers were Native Americans off Pueblo's or Hispanics right out of Mexico. I've lived in DC where there's a world pop and kids and cultures and religions just wear their hair naturally. When I lived in South Florida, it's Haitian, it's Jamaican, it's Cuban, it's Puerto Rican, Dominican, and those cultures wear their hair in natural styles. They bury it up and draw locks. But if I go to school and a teacher cuts my locks off because he don't like them, he's humiliating me, my self-esteem, my culture, I'm being ripped of all of my internal pride in how I do my thing, my personal way of life, and that has to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would just say, just because I would vote against this and against a law like this doesn't mean I oppose or I support discrimination. It means I just don't support the boot of the state.
Then vote for it.
No, it means I don't support the boot of the state coming down on people in a subjective area, in an area that, you know, I mean, you don't need the state. You can have, you can oppose and, you know, and, you know, it sounds like there was a million-dollar settlement. Good. I mean, if there's things that are unjust, there's ways to, to deal with that without having the boot of the state come down.
Call the question?
Yep. I think that's fine and hearing, no disagreement associated therewith. This is a vote on, in support of the Michigan Crown Act as introduced by Dr. Pugh, supported by, seconded by Mr. Bullock. Ms. Evans, to you for a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Comments by State Board of Education members, those of you who continue to have energy for those comments. Ms. Snyder and then Mr. McMillan.
Yes, I would just like to address a new requirement that Michigan has in this, in our public education system for financial literacy.
in our public education system for financial literacy. I had the opportunity of listening to Create Every Opportunity, which is just one vendor, if you will, of encouraging those dollars to go to an approved, hopefully, menu of options that local school districts can choose from. I know as a parent, I've engaged in that privately, but it would be great to see what that looks like, and whether or not you've had a chance to explore that as a department. Maybe we can have them come and speak to our board on behalf of options or what that looks like as we move forward to implement that requirement.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you sharing that. We'd be happy to report on financial literacy. As a rule, we're not having individual purveyors of presenting for the state board, but we're happy to present on the new requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McMillan?
There's a little talk about COVID loss today, and it reminded me of a, of a podcast I listened to, and I know podcasts have been denigrated here, but you can get good information. This was one with, he was a Bernie Sanders supporter, had been, and had been a big supporter of public health, but he was part of an article, and he was talking about how we should no longer trust public health. And he, like I said, he was, he continues to call himself a liberal, but he says he has no home. Vinay Prasad, he's a hematologist, oncologist, professor at University of San, California, San Francisco, author of two books and 450 peer-reviewed articles. And he was just talking about what a horrible job, and he pointed that public health had done in the United States, that the harm that we inflicted on children was unnecessary. In Sweden, they had their kids going to K-12, they have the lowest excess deaths, which is how you would actually be able to compare one's country to another, depending on what you call excess deaths. It's either, we had, the United States had twice as many or seven times as many excess deaths per capita, percentage-wise. And so, you know, it's clear that they didn't have to keep kids away from school, and, which is something that Nikki and I had, had argued in, in a lot of this time. So a lot of this COVID loss really falls on, you know, people that were making these decisions. The governor, state superintendent, who advocated it endlessly. He also talked about how pericarditis and, you know, myocarditis is certainly increasing. And as all these facts came, come out, he just said that it's clear that, you know, because of COVID, there are countries now that are saying that, you know, anybody under 30 should not take these vaccines because the risk is greater than the reward. These things were not allowed to even be talked about. That was the main thing he was talking about, is that just the shutting down of any discussion, the censoring of people who had alternative opinions. He said, in a situation like that, where you've never seen it before, that's what you want, is everybody talking about it, not censoring things. And so those that were censored are now being proven right, natural immunity, immunity is now clear. You know, and we're talking about, you know, we're talking about quote-unquote "experts" now are coming around to a lot of these areas and saying, we got it wrong. We know that public health kept changing their, their minds regularly. And, you know, I just think that it's a shame, it didn't have to happen. The quote-unquote "experts" are being proven to have, have exacted the, the problems on the kids. And so, you know, we, you know, and there was also lies about, if you get the vaxxed, you're not gonna, you know, you're gonna be immune, you're not gonna spread. Well, those were obviously incorrect as well. So there's just a lot of things that have come up that are clearly incorrect and were harmful, and I hope that, you know, that going forward, the, this kind of censoring, this kind of technocracy, where only certain experts are listened to, but people who made the Great Barrington Declaration, that were Harvard and Oxford professors and virologists, were silenced and, and denigrated, and people who took ivermectin, like myself, were laughed at and said that you were, you know, it's horse medicine and stuff, when it's clear that it wasn't just that, it was, it's been used for, by millions and millions and billion, you know, probably billions of people in, in areas of the, of the world that didn't, weren't affected as much by COVID. They, they know, I mean, that, that kind of thing is useful. So it's just, it's interesting that as, as the proof and as the facts actually start coming out, even those who advocated for the lockdowns and the harm that we inflicted on kids, they're changing their tune, and I hope that there should be accountability because this, this learning loss shouldn't have, shouldn't have had to have happened. It didn't happen in some parts of the country, it didn't happen in Sweden, and the proof is now that they did so much better than the US in, in excess deaths and in health. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McMillan. Any other board members? Any other board members? Yes, please, Ms. Tilly.
In honor of Women's History Month, I wanted to recite Still I Rise by Maya Angelou. You may write me down in history with your bitter, twisted lies. You may try, try me in the very dirt, but still, like dust, I rise. Does my sassiness upset you? Why are you beset with gloom? Because I walk like I've got oil wells pumping in my living room? Just like moons and like suns, with a certainty of tides? Just like hope springing high, still I rise. Did you want to see me broken, bowed head and lowered eyes? Shoulders falling down like teardrops, weakened by my soulful cries? Does my haughtiness offend you? Don't you take it awful hard? Because I laugh like I've got gold mines digging in my own backyard. You may shoot me with your words, you may cut me with your eyes, you may kill me with your hatefulness, but still, like air, I rise. Does my sexiness upset you? Does it come as a surprise that I dance like I've got diamonds at the meeting of my thighs? Out of the huts of history shame, I rise. Up from a past that's rooted in pain, I rise. I'm a black ocean leaping and wide, welling and swelling, I bear in the tide. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear, I rise. Into a daybreak that's wondrously clear, I rise. Bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave, I am the dream and the hope of the slave. I rise, I rise, I rise.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Any other, any other sharing from board members? Future board meetings are Tuesday, April 11th, Tuesday, May 9th, Tuesday, June 13th, all regular meetings. Tuesday, May 16th is a work session of the board, and we're currently looking to do that at Camp Tasmajida. We are going to be reaching out to board members in the next week about that opportunity because there's some sub-opportunities associated therewith. If there are any topics board members would like included in future meeting agendas, please notify Liz or me. And relative to Ms. Tilly's recitation of Maya Angelou's poem, we will be continuing our comprehensive history instruction webinar series tomorrow with a, a piece on the equal rights movement.